55 PM, Wednesday, June 9, 2021, roll call please.
Yes, Mayor Ta.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Manzo.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. So a salute to the flat would be Councilmember Doe and invocation would be Vice Mayor Nguyen. Please stand.
Please, please.
Rice, put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. It really begin, a blessed allegiance to the flat of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This part you have for your, for the invocations. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we meet tonight to conduct business of our city government. Help us keep in mind that we are here to serve the people of Westminster and enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all of the citizens we represent. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Doe and Vice Mayor Nguyen. Next, we have report from City Attorney.
There's nothing to report from the closed session.
Next, Expert T Communication. None? Any report from City Clerk?
Yes, so normally our emergency services coordinator, Robert Acosta, would provide a COVID-19 update. Unfortunately, tonight, he will not be providing that update. He is, however, attending the Cal OSHA meeting that's taking place, which would, based on, based on what happens at that meeting, may affect our reopening plans. So we will provide that information as soon as we receive it. That's all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. We don't have any special presentation tonight. So next, we have oral communication, please.
Yes, this is the time of the meeting where members of the public may address the city council on anything that is on the agenda or not on the agenda within the council's jurisdiction. And that being said, members of the public may also submit a written communication that may be read into the record. And I did receive two, so I will read those. And I also have a couple of requests to speak. So first, first letter is from Sang Nguyen. And it states, Dear Westminster Councilmembers, my name is Sang Nguyen and I'm a resident of Westminster. I've noticed that the streets and sidewalks of Westminster have become a garbage collection area. It is absolutely horrific and unacceptable. Attached is a picture I took of the Westminster and Magnolia intersection on June 6, 2020. The city is literally full of trash at every sidewalk and corner and a complete embarrassment. How much does it cost for street sweeping? Is it is beyond me how anyone on the council who either lives or drives through Westminster cannot notice this. This is akin to the broken windows theory by Rudy Giuliani back in the 90s. The broken windows theory states that visible signs of crime, antisocial behavior, and civil disorder create an urban environment that encourages further crime and disorder, including serious crimes. I would like to know what is being done about this. I'll provide those pictures. They didn't come out well for me to put on the screen, so I'll email those to the council. And again, that's from Sang Nguyen. The next letter is from U.S. Marine Corps retired Robert L. Harrison. And it states, he has a request to rescind Agenda Item 5.1 that was approved on December 9, 2020, including any other approved monuments, and stop construction of the Kwangtri Monument and all future construction of monuments at Freedom Park. He states, several Vietnam veterans of American chapters opposed the Kwangtri Monument project opposed by the mayor and asked the city council to rescind the decision, which the council passed on December 9. Many of us, including Colonel Craig Mandeville, had emailed objections, which some acknowledged in the Zoom meeting to raise concerns and objections. Though the emails were not read, some acknowledged in the virtual meeting were disconnected without hearing their objections. Mayor Truitt on the city in a rush process to approve the Kwangtri Monument did not sufficiently hold community meetings to get public input. The American Vietnam Veterans and the Coalition of South Vietnamese Armies and the community at large did not have an opportunity to give input. In fact, Mr. Lan Nguyen explained the project had to be carried out in secret because the committee was concerned of adverse reaction and opposed by members of the community. No transparency. Mayor Truitt and Councilman Charlene Nguyen misled the city of Westminster and council that the Kwangtri Victory Foundation was a nonprofit, whereas they were not a nonprofit and are still not a nonprofit, according to the IRS and State of California. Articles of the corporation were only filed on December 1, 2020. Using the articles, they rushed and misled the city of Westminster and the city council during the meeting on December 9. Mayor stated there were no credible opposition to the monument, knowing thousands had spoken out against the project on social media and from email groups, the Association of the Vietnamese Marines, the Coalition of Vietnamese Veterans of Southern California, the Assembly of Republic of Vietnam Army South, Western State Central Coordinator, had spoken out against the project. He also states there may be a conflict of interest where the mayor and councilman Nguyen or Vice Mayor Nguyen in proposing the monument use their official positions, being on the board of directors of Kwangtri Victory Foundation actually running the project. They did not recuse themselves, use their official positions soliciting financial donations to benefit their political agenda. It's been presented to the city council where the original Vietnam War memorial was built. Those that participated, American Vietnam veterans and South Vietnamese veterans had integrity because they lived through and survived the war, saw the death and destruction, losing comrades, endured and suffered prison in escaping Vietnam, and still suffer today. Now second and third generation Vietnamese city council members and their friends are stealing valor from American Vietnamese veterans and South Vietnamese veterans using monuments of specific battles with plaques on them honoring themselves for political and personal gain. Freedom Park was not meant to favor any particular country and its battles and is not large enough for this or other approved monuments, which should be placed in any of the 19 other city parks. According to those that lived through the Kwangtri Battle, Victory Battle in general military protocol, the proposed monument does not respect military culture and protocol where the photoshopped picture to be placed on the monument is disrespectful. Please rescind all approved monuments and stop any further construction. Again, that's from Robert L. Harrison. As far as requests to speak, now I have a request to speak from a Kia Hashem Minjad, if she's on here. Okay, I don't see her on here, so we'll, we'll circle back. And then I also have a request to speak from Tony Bowie. I also don't see him, so we'll circle back on those. So at this time, anybody who would like to speak, you got five minutes to speak, so please raise your hand. First speaker is Davora Maraschall.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. And for those of you that are listening on Zoom, I can hardly wait until we can be in person. I hate doing these Zoom things. Just my disclaimer. So good evening, everybody. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the council for continuing to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, because I think those two things are really, really important for the residents of Westminster, and I really appreciate that and want to applaud you that, that, that continues. And I do hope that we can meet in person soon so that I can be in the council chambers to see in God we trust. I really appreciate that. I would actually like to discuss the various lawsuits that have been filed against the city of Westminster over the last 10 or so years. And I would like to thank our city attorney, Christian Bettenhausen, and I apologize if I have mispronounced your name. In the closed session, I actually asked, how are we insured? Are we self-insured? Do we have an insurance company? How does that work? So from what Mr. Bettenhausen explained, and I understand that he is not at liberty to give details, we are actually pooled in an entity, which we have to meet either a deductible that could be an individual per occurrence deductible or an aggregate deductible. So I apologize to those of you that don't speak insurance. I actually am a life and health insurance broker. I've sold employee benefits for over 30 years, and I do understand how the insurance works. So let me just throw out a couple of examples so that you'll better understand. So on an individual deductible, just for the sake of example, because I don't know the particulars of our, of our insurance policy, for the sake of example, we could make a per occurrence or an individual claim against us, just for the sake of example, let's use $100,000. So we pay the first $100,000 and then the pool or the insurance policy that we belong to would pick up a portion of the rest of that. Or we could do an aggregate, just for the sake of example, let's say that that is $500,000. After $500,000, then the insurance pool would pick up a portion, maybe all, maybe, maybe a part. I don't really know because I'm not familiar with, with how that works. But we have had multiple lawsuits against us over the years, of which I have been involved in Westminster politics. We've had at least two multimillion dollar lawsuits against us with the police department because of unfair. I apologize for unfair. Again, I apologize. They were treated unfairly. I apologize. We settled a claim for a private, private police chief for $500,000. We have possibly something against a former police chief who kind of disappeared. And we have several, we have several claims outstanding with current police officers. We also have a new, relatively new, it's not new, it was filed in 2019, Eliahu Ashi Cortez Levy, who worked in our water district, who has filed a lawsuit against us, which I'm sure that the council talked about in private section, private session prior to this meeting. How much are we on the hook for? The city of Westminster and our restaurant, our residents? We need to know what we're paying for. And the reason that I bring this up is it seems like we have a poor or non-existent HR department that could have been involved in these particular incidents at the beginning, and they would not be, they would not be at this level of lawsuits at this point in time. We need to have good HR representation. There are a lot of HR, great HR people available right now because of COVID. And we need to take a look at this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Jody. I really hope that the mayor, city council, and city manager listened very closely to the two speakers prior to me. Both made really, really good valid points that I don't think you should miss. And I want to circle back to what the first gentleman, his point. And regarding the monuments, this is something I've brought up a few different times. Sid Goldstein Park is one of our parks, and it's under Parks and Recreation, and it is part of our overall general plan. And so anything regarding adding new monuments or a potential quota or just what is the vision for monuments at Sid Goldstein Park should be discussed community-wide, agreed to, and put into our master plan. And it is not. And we're going to continue to have issues and disagreements until we just get in front of this in a very logical and civic fashion and address it. The other thing that I want to touch upon is on our agenda tonight, the Agenda Item regarding TD Strategies. You know, this whole issue could have been avoided if we had simple transparency. And this is something that myself and other residents have been speaking about for years. There is almost zero transparency at Westminster City Hall. There are things that are always going on that are questionable, and we, the people, we always find out. And we often find out even before some city council members know about things. That is really, really wrong, and it's all because of a lack of transparency and pure, poor communication. And it really makes things looked, look from the outside looking in. It look, makes things oftentimes look very, very shady. We need to stop. Also regarding, I have carefully read a couple times our city manager's response to why he signed the TD Strategies agreement. You know, the bottom line is, is I'm sorry, Marwan, you got snuckered. I don't know who told you or convinced you that that would be good, but I've read your five reasons or five things that you felt that Tyler and his company could be looking into, and this is all very offensive. Many of us take it very seriously who we vote for to go to Sacramento and Washington DC on our behalf and to represent the various districts. Most importantly, to bring money and benefits home to their districts. That is what they do. The fact that our city did not and apparently does not know how to establish effective communications and ongoing relationships with the offices of our elected officials is quite frankly unbelievable. I don't believe it. And these are fixed positions. It doesn't matter who the person is or political party that rotates through it. These are still fixed positions. If somebody loses reelection or somebody else is elected, we should be ready and willing to introduce ourselves and establish communications and effective working relationship right from the get-go. I, on your item number five of what you wanted TD Strategies to work on, and that is cannabis. Again, this is another one that is almost laughable. There is so much free information out there. In fact, the state wants to help. The state is even pouring COVID relief funds into, to help our growers distribution chains and even some dispensaries. I would love to be part of this. I would love to help. And again, just the other day, right here on the 405 in Westminster, next to the 405, we roughly between Edwards and Bolsachica, the over ramps, there's a big electronic sign for the automotive dealers of Westminster. It's an rotating electronic sign, and I just saw over the weekend a big full sign advertisement for either weed maps or ease. But one of the services that you can order and have cannabis and hemp products delivered right here to Westminster and ha ha.
I hope, I'm really sorry, I hope from our city clerk that your time is up. Yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next speaker is Claudia Steinmetz. Claudia?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Absolutely.
Oh, hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Claudia Steinmetz, and I have been a resident of Westminster for over eight years and an active volunteer within our city. Last month was AAPI Heritage Month, and I personally would have loved to have seen our city celebrate and acknowledge this as our community is home to many Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. June is Pride Month, and I would love to see our city embrace diversity by following Garden Grove's movement of a pride flag at the clock tower as a sign of solidarity with our LGBTQI+ community. I'd formally like to request that the Westminster City Council discuss the possibility of being truly inclusive and joining other cities and celebrating Pride Month this year and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last speaker is Terry Rains. Terry?
Good evening. Why wasn't the public and all council members invited to attend Sunday's Kwangchi Monument groundbreaking event at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park? And why was no special event permit agendized and obtained? Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager? First question regarding the proposed budget. Why doesn't the city hold a public hearing on the budget before it is adopted? Other cities do, and Westminster did until 2011. The entire council had absolutely nothing to say about the budget at the May 19 study session. I, on the other hand, had concerns and questions, which I presented during public comments and subsequently in email exchanges with the interim finance director. Second question, why don't we build a salary vacancy factor into the budget like other cities do? Vacancies are inevitable. Instead, Westminster uses money saved on paper from vacancies to fund unrelated items to avoid requesting budget adjustments. This is, this completely undermines fiscal transparency. Third question, staff is asking council to formally declare a fiscal emergency, but it is not disclosing the real reason for doing so, again undermining transparency. I know the real reason, but do you? Action Item F is a slippery slope I've been down before in other cities. Staff should only be authorized to transfer appropriations between funds in very specific limited scenarios. The inter-fund transfer practice is also known as managing the general fund towards zero. The result, sizable fund surpluses and/or deficits are covered up easily and quietly, again undermining transparency. I strongly oppose the city manager's proposal to not hire an assistant city manager. Every city our size has one. Instead, he wants to hire an economic development manager, assistant to the city manager, a much lower position. I have reviewed both job descriptions. This city needs solid leadership. Interesting, many of the duties of an assistant city manager are exactly what our city manager hired Tyler Dip to do. Now the Dip's contract has been withdrawn, use that $84,000 to fund the higher position and hire a high caliber individual. Ask yourselves why the city manager doesn't want the higher position. ACMs typically focus on day-to-day organizational issues and manage high-profile projects, so the city manager can focus on more external issues and opportunities. Yes, our city needs a strong economic development point person, but that can be achieved by either, one, adding Economic Development Director to the ACM title like Garden Grove does, and we did until Chet Simmons left, or two, by hiring a separate economic development position funded through the Economic Development Fund. A year ago, council directed staff to hire an EV consultant, but to my knowledge, no action was ever taken. Westminster Municipal Code 2.08.040B requires the city manager obtain input from the mayor and city council before making any significant organizational or position changes. Given our city's current situation and the need for solid succession planning, council should direct the city manager to hire a qualified assistant city manager and to fulfill the economic development need through one of the two options I provided. FYI, the ACM pay grade is not where it should be. It should be above the department heads. One thing is certain, no matter what the position is, Tyler Dip is not qualified for the job. Very early in the morning on June 2, I emailed the city manager my formal detailed objection to Tyler Dip's contract and copied all of you. Coincidentally, or not, Dip submitted his separation letter later that same day. The city manager called me the next morning. We had a lengthy discussion about it. What troubled me most from that conversation was him telling me he didn't understand why his actions sparked so much controversy and opposition from the council and the public. He also didn't grasp the irony of him secretly hiring the person he won the city manager position over because he needed that person's help to do his job. The city manager denied speaking to the mayor or, or council members prior to hiring Dip, but I am not convinced we have the full story yet. The city attorney should publicly address the contract, the Milton Marx Post-Government Employment Restrictions Act, and why Dip was paid for services rendered prior to the execution of the contract on April 29. Dip did not submit required documents to the city until late April and still hasn't filed an active FBN statement with the county. His April invoice provided no breakdown of hours and tasks. The City Municipal Code requires a written agreement for purchases over $45,000 for a reason. I strongly support the lowering the city manager's purchasing limit to $50,000. Thank you, Councilman Manzo, for putting that item on the agenda. Perhaps a written contract should be required for purchases greater than $25,000 instead of $45,000 as well. FYI, the county is only paying Dip $31.25 per hour for 20 hours per week. 60% less than the $80 per hour the city agreed to pay him. Hmm, you know the saying, it ain't over till the fat lady sings. Well, this fat lady has plenty of singing left to do on this matter. So stay tuned. Also, it's unacceptable to start a meeting almost an hour late. The Agenda Policy says closed session starts at 5:00 PM if necessary, or it should be continued till after the regular meeting. The regular meeting should start at 7:00 PM as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have any other speaker?
Last call for speakers. Oh, one more speaker. Okay. We have Camilla Overbeek.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would just like to piggyback off of what another community member said, and that's with regard to the, the pride flag. The city seems to not do much in way of inclusivity, and I think it's high time that we start doing that. Because I remember about this time last year, I also reached out to the council and reminded them that Juneteenth was a very important moment in this country's history, and I asked for them to acknowledge it, and they failed to do so then. And they're apparently failing to do so now. So as much as we want to honor a lot of history that is represented here in this city, I think it's also very important that we remember that there are other people in this community who deserve to be recognized, they deserve to be heard, and their history deserves to be told. And so I would ask that it somehow, some way, this council seek to remedy the fact that you have ignored the LGBTQ+ community as well as the Black Americans who were enslaved for so many years. And Juneteenth was their final day of emancipation, yet they still suffer to this day. So I would like to ask that perhaps you guys do something to remedy those two situations tonight. That's all.
All right, so do we have any other speaker?
I do not have any additional speakers.
All right, so with that, I, I close oral communication. And next, we have consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar, I consider routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless member of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion. City Council? May I have a motion? Move to approve? Second? All right, so we have the motion as second on the floor to approve the consent.
That's a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta to approve the consent calendar, roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Next, we have public hearings.
Due to COVID-19 restrictions, changes have been made to the public hearing process in order to ensure members of the public may participate remotely. Members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding public hearing were able to submit comments in writing up to 24 hours prior to the meeting. In lieu of written comments, members of the public who wish to verbally address the city council tonight during the public hearing may speak via Zoom. We had no request to speak in advance, so anyone who would like to speak at the time of the public hearing would like to speak at the time of the public hearing, when the mayor opens public hearing, you just need to raise your hand. I'll call on you.
Thank you so much. Now open a public hearing, item 4.4 2020 Urban Water Management Plan update and adoption of water shortage contingency plan. So may I have a staff report?
Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. We're going to have a brief consultant presentation on this item, but before we do that, I would like to thank Scott Miller, who's our water superintendent, who I know spent a lot of time working on this document. This is a document that we have to upgrade every five years, so it's very, very critical. With that, I'll turn it to Jake Noe to take it from there.
Thank you, Model One. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and a member of council. Again, this is Jake Noe. I'm interim public works director, city engineer. So this item has been working with the consultant that have the contract with Modox under the master contracts. So the company working on this plan is Arcadis. Tonight, we have Serena Sribulu. She's a project manager who working with our city staff to complete this project. This company also completed the previous 2010 and 2015 urban water management plans. And again, just follow up with Model One, I would like to acknowledge the city staff who worked on this plans, that's Scott Miller and also Anna Gonzalez. So with that, Ms. Sribulu, can you please start your presentation? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and everyone. I will start sharing my screen. Just give me a moment here. All right. Can you please confirm the slides are up?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so we have three items today in front of you for adoption. We have the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which represents the city's planning elements to satisfy the 1983 Urban Water Management Plan Act. We have the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which is describes the city's actions to respond to and be prepared for a water shortage condition. And then the third item is an additional appendix that is an addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And I will go into each of them briefly in the next few minutes. So we're starting with the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. So a little bit of a background is that an urban water management plan is essentially a document that looks at your long-term water demand and water supply and essentially doing an analysis of how reliable the water supply is. And it is required to be done by the state. And every urban water supplier providing greater than 3,000 acre feet per year or supplying to more than 3,000 customers per year need to do this every five years. There are some new items in this 2020 cycle. The key things are a long-term drought assessment that looks at a five-dry-year cycle instead of a three-year cycle that was done in the past. A near-term drought risk assessment, looking at if there's a water shortage in the next five years, then how do we respond to that? A Water Shortage Contingency Plan, that is a standalone document to be adopted at the same time here. And an energy intensity reporting, looking at how much energy is used to produce and distribute water within the city. And then the last item is a reduced delta reliance reporting. So looking at the water use of water demand projection versus the water supply. On the water demand side, the demand in the city, the water use in the city has been relatively stable in the past decade. The city relies on 100% potable water. And in the next 25 years, we are projecting that the water use in the city will remain pretty stable, a slight increase in the next five years, and then relatively stable, very slight decrease in the following 20 years. On the water supply side, we are still relying on groundwater for the majority of the city's supply and looking to increase to about from 77% this year to 85% of the city's supply coming from the Orange County groundwater basin. And then the remaining of the city's supply will be imported from Metropolitan Water District. So key findings of this analysis is that the city has the long-term water service reliability under all hydrologic scenarios that we looked at. Also, in the near term, the city has the supply capability sufficient to meet demands. And then the city also has plans for supply implementation and investing in water use efficiency programs that will help meet projected water demands. For the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, so this is a plan that looks at how the city will respond and be prepared for a shortage condition. So some new requirements here. In the past, this was not a standalone plan. It was part of the Urban Water Management Plan. But this year, with the California Department of Water Resources has made this plan a standalone document based on the new requirement of the 2018 Water Conservation Legislation. And then some new key elements that they added. So to look at an annual water supply demand assessment starting next year, each of the California water suppliers will be comparing supply and demand annually and reporting that to the state, looking at different water shortage levels and how to respond to them, and adding a communication protocol element to that plan. The last item to be, that is in front of you for adoption today, is an addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Essentially, there was no guidance for that in 2015, so none of the water suppliers did that. So eventually, California Water Resources Department came out with the guidance this year. So it's just a quick analysis, looking at how we are being self-reliant, looking at how water use efficiency and advanced water treatment using, you know, the groundwater replenishment based on Orange County Water District is helping us becoming more self-reliant locally here. And with that, a summary of my quick presentation today. In front of you, we have the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan that satisfy all of the Urban Water Management Plan Act requirements. We have the reduced delta reliance reporting consistent with DWR guidance. We have consulted or in coordination with appropriate agencies in development of this plan. And we are on track to submit to DWR by July 1st deadline. Recommended actions include for city council to adopt the three items that are presented to you today. And with that, any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question. So I really appreciate your providing us a really good representation. And my question is that at this time, do we need to come up with any land conservation? Or we just need to adopt or approve your recommendation for this item?
So your question is, do we?
So my question is that there is our city. We need to have any conservation land regarding water shortage.
Scott or Jake, do you want to take that question in terms of where the city is?
I can try that if you don't mind, and I know Scott is with us. Mayor, I don't think we are required yet by any guidelines from the state to really do. However, Scott Miller is already on top of this item, and he is going to start activating his team to start monitoring the situation and then do what we used to do before, couple of years ago, to definitely be ready to meet any requirements that's going to come down through the state. Scott, would you like to add anything else?
The only thing that I would add to that is the current ordinance and resolution that we have addressed several of these issues. We were issued a letter from the state encouraging us to prepare for, you know, possibly another drought. We've always stayed very active in our conservation efforts. That's never really slowed down, but the council was always also wise enough to approve a pretty hardy water prohibition, which carries us through the first couple of restrictions that the state might impose. We're already doing those things, so we're in very good shape.
Thank you so much for that. Really appreciate that. So do we have any other question or concern from member on the city council before I ask public comments? Okay, I hear none. So open for public comments. City Club, do we have any member on the public who'd like to speak regarding this item?
Just one second. Okay. We have Teri Rains.
Okay.
Teri, go ahead.
Good evening, Teri Rains, Westminster. I admit I didn't have the time to get through for once this entire staff report, but, you know, I have brought up during the budget my questions related to purchased water as opposed to pumped water. Obviously, the pumped water directly in our city is cheaper than purchased water. And part of the explanation for the change in the budget was that we were able to pump 100% of our water needs in the current fiscal year. But that next year, we'll have to revert back to the, I don't know, 80/20 or 75/25 ratio. I don't know if that's part of the plan, or if that's just... I guess I wondered if we could do it in one year, why we couldn't do it for future years, you know, to save money. The other part of that is we did raise the water rates, you know, to the residents and businesses in the city. So, you know, again, that may or may not apply to the actual formal plan here that's being submitted, but it's certainly relative to it. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, so do we have any other?
Yes, we have Jody Boyd. Jody?
Hi, I hate to start this with a question, but I'm wondering if we get our purchased water through the Metropolitan Water District. And if we do, I just read something yesterday on the in the New York Times about the Metropolitan Water District in Orange County. Actually, won second place in the best tasting water. So I don't know if that's where we get the water that we have delivered in from the Colorado River and sources up north, but I'm kind of hoping so. And if it is, good job to somebody. That's it.
Scott, would you like to respond to that question? I think that's really important.
Sure. So as far as our import connections, they are with Metropolitan. A portion of that comes from the Colorado River, and the other portion of it comes from the state water project. Currently, we're still under 100% pumping. But when we do go back to, we're obligated to take a certain amount of import water depending on the conditions of the basin. But she's correct, we do get our water from Metropolitan, from both the state water project and the Colorado River.
Thank you for your answer. Do we have any any other comment from public?
Last call for speakers. I have none.
All right. And then now we have council discussion in action. City Council?
Move to approve.
Second?
All right, that's a motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Mayor Ta. That's going to be to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster Adopting the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan." Adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster Adopting a Water Shortage Contingency Plan." And adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster Adopting an Addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan." So roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
Next item, regular business, 5.1. Resolution authorizing the execution of action for purpose of obtaining federal financial assistance provided by Federal Department of Homeland Security and sub-granted to the state.
My second.
All right.
Right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by Councilmember Ho. And that is to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster Authorizing the Execution of Actions for the Purpose of Obtaining Federal Financial Assistance Provided by the Federal Department of Homeland Security and Subgranted Through the State of California. Approve the Agreement to Transfer Funds for the 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant Program in Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. Authorize the City Manager or his designated executive agreement. Approve a Revenue Increase to the Fiscal Year 2020/2021 Budget for the Office of EMPG Program for Anticipated Grant Revenues in the Amount of $12,613 and approve a corresponding budget increase of $12,613 to General Police Services Disaster Preparedness in the Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 Budget for Costs Associated with the EMPG Program." So roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item, 5.2, City Council Housing Authority Public Financing Authority Budget and Appropriation of Fund for Fiscal Year 2021 to 2023.
Mayor Ta, members of the council, good evening again. This is our yearly budget that we are proposing for next fiscal year. It's a two-year budget, as you heard, but we are committing only to one year. And I'd like Erin Banks, our interim finance director, to go through the presentation that, very similar to the one you heard in the study session, with some highlights of what's coming up in that budget. So Erin?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Erin Bax, interim finance director. I'm going to show you basically the same presentation we did at the study session, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so this is a proposed two-year budget that will cover the city's operations from July 1, 21 to June 30, 23. In this presentation, I'm going to focus on fiscal year 21, 22. But the two-year budget gives us a chance to see where the city is headed based on current costs and trends. And as always, we'll bring the second year back to the council for approval before the start of the next year. Before we discuss the 21, 23 budget, here are some highlights from the current fiscal year 2020, 21. I'm not going to read I'm not going to read these, they're in the staff report, and we did review them at the study session, but these are some things that the police department did keeping Westminster safe. Here are some highlights from the current fiscal year, supporting our local economy and quality of life. This is from all departments. Here are some more supporting our local economy and quality of life. These are some highlights, keeping government transparent and accountable. And now I'm gonna just give a current year update, so we started the year with the uncertainty of the financial impacts of the pandemic. Revenue estimates reflected the adoption of the cost recovery schedule in fiscal year 1920 and the fourth year voter approved local funding measure. The adopted budget included reduced contractual costs, reduction in services, closed capital projects, six frozen full-time position. And part-time wage reductions and the use of reserves in the amount of 1.9 million. Current estimates, however, show revenue coming in at 3.3 million over budgeted amounts and expenditures coming in 1.9 million under budget. From reduce reduced service levels due to the pandemic and position vacancies. We are recommending a fiscal year 2021 transfer of 1.5 million to fund 2122 street projects. And 250,000 of savings to one or both of our pension and. OPEB Section 115 trust accounts. The current projected contribution to reserves for the 2021 fiscal year is 2.2 million. The 2123 recommended budget, both budget years require the use of reserves to be balanced. Year two because of the loss of the local controlled funding. 2122 uses 1.1 million and 2223 10.4 million. The city's local funding measure revenue is budgeted at 13.7 million for fiscal year 2122. But the measure expires December 31st 22, so fiscal year 2223 only includes six months or 7.1 million. Expense increases are brought on by annual contract increases primarily in the public and safety and emergency response sectors. Currently, over 75% of Westminster's budget is spent on public safety, including emergency response, fire and disaster preparedness services. This is a chart showing the general fund revenue. Which are budgeted at 66.7 million, as you can see, taxes make up the majority of these revenues at almost 86%. This is followed by charges for services at 8%, investment at 3%, licenses and permits at 2%. And fines, other revenue and intergovernmental at less than 1%. The city is in the process of updating our fee schedule. Any increases or decreases recommended by the study will be brought back to the city council for approval. To further break down our largest source of revenue, taxes at 57.2 million. Property taxes are 32% or 18.1 million and the largest source of revenue. Most of the revenue in this category comes from property tax in lieu of V L F, which is budgeted at 11.2 million. Sales tax at 30% or 17.4 million is the second largest, followed by the locally generated revenue measure at 24%. Or 13.7 million. Again, with this falling, the end date falling in the second year of this two-year budget, we have included only half a year or 7.1 million for 2223. This drop constitutes contributes to the larger use of reserves of 10.4 million to balance the budget in the second year. Sales tax is one of the general fund revenues most impacted by the uncertainty of the coronavirus. Fourth quarter 2020, general sales tax was 2.3% below the same quarter in 2019. The hardest hit categories were general consumer goods down 15.9%, restaurants down 24.3% and fuel and service stations down 35.6%. These were offset by the large increase in the state and county pools of 31%. This is the same chart showing our local revenue measure. And this is collected a little differently and is only down 1.9% from the prior fourth quarter. In a district add-on tax, the place of sale is the address of delivery, so there is no pool allocation. In addition, there are several online entities with fulfillment centers in California. In these situations, the sales tax revenue goes to the city who has the fulfillment center. But with the local measure in place, that revenue still comes to the city. If the fulfillment center is outside of California, the revenue is allocated through the pool. But if it is in California, the city loses the revenue generated by the sales tax side, but still receives the revenue from the local measure. Our update on our local funding measure, the voters approved this local funding in November of 16. And the city began collecting the 1% in April of 17. Providing much needed revenue to cover an ongoing general fund operating deficit. It's set to sunset December 31st of 22. The funding has allowed the city to avoid bankruptcy and to be able to continue providing services to Westminster. Local funding has provided the funds needed to make basic repairs to Westminster streets, including 6 million in repair. And to repair and maintain roads, hire and recruit police officers, as well as additional code enforcement and park personnel. Local funding helps stabilize Westminster's finances, providing three years of positive ending fund balances without the use of transfers from other funds. In fiscal years 1718, 1819 and 1920, and is projected to do the same for the current fiscal year 2021. Local funding has allowed the city to further stabilize finances and pay down pension debt, saving the city of Westminster millions of dollars in the long run. Including including providing some of the funding for our Section 115 trust accounts. While the majority of the funding came from the RDA dissolution proceeds, the city has also used savings to bring the accounts to balances of 4 million. For the pension-related trust and 4.4 million for the OPEB-related trust as of March 31st 2021. The fiscal year 2122 budget is showing a general fund balance of 31.3 million after a use of 1.1 million in reserves to balance the budget. At this amount, 17.1 million is unrestricted. Another 11.5 million is set aside for our emergency reserve. And the remaining 2.7 million is set aside for any potential RDA dissolution issues. The fiscal year 2223 budget is showing an ending general fund balance of 20.9 million after a use of 10.4 million in reserves to balance the budget. At this amount, 6.1 million is unrestricted, 12.1 million set aside for emergency reserve and the remaining 2.7 for the RDA dissolution. These reserves are set for the city's fund balance policy. This is a five-year projection of general fund revenues and expenditures. The local measure expires December 31st 22, so 2223 includes a 7.1 million of revenue. Which is the reason the revenue drops from 2122 to 2223. The last two years do not include any local measure revenue. The majority of the expenditure increases in each of the projected years is related to contract increases. And the last three years also include 1.5 million annually for street projects. This slide shows the general fund projected ending fund balance or reserve balance for the next several years. The current fiscal year 2021 is estimated to end with 32.4 million in reserve. Fiscal year 2122 uses 1.1 million of reserves and 2223 10.4 million. The general fund is completely out of money by 2425 without cuts and with the loss of the local revenue measure. A large portion of the general fund budget is CalPERS cost. The rates that drive our annual payment requirement are based on an interest rate assumption of 7%. Due to lower than expected returns, return uncertainty and extreme return fluctuations, the CalPERS board will consider dropping the discount rate to 6%. At their meeting in November of 2021. The impact of this drop on the city of Westminster is an additional 5 million annually. This is something we will continue to watch. If the interest rate assumption is dropped, we will start seeing the increased costs in fiscal year 2324. As currently projected with the 7% discount rate, the total purse cost for 222324 are projected at 15.7 million. With a reduced 6% discount rate, that total would increase to 21 million. The water fund is the city's next largest fund and receives most of the budgeted 19.5 million in revenue from charges for service. A majority of the 17.4 million in expenditures are in pump and basin assessment, salaries and benefits and purchased purchased water. All internal service funds have the targeted minimum of 500,000 in unrestricted fund balance with the exception of the risk management and workers' compensation benefit fund. Excess fund balance will be used before internal service fund rates are increased. The 2122 budget includes 9.8 million in funding for capital projects from various sources, including general fund. Transfer from savings in 2021, park dedication, gas tax, measure M, municipal lighting. C D B G water and building maintenance. And these next few slides are lists of the specific projects that are projected in the budget. I'm not going to read them because we did review them at the study session, but Jake No, interim public works director. City engineer is available to answer questions if you have any on the specific projects. These are the park dedication, mini lighting, water and building maintenance projects. These are the general fund, gas tax, measure M, C D B G projects that are proposed. And this is a map of the street. Proposed street improvement projects for 2122. And in conclusion, this is the two-year budget that will cover the city's operation costs for the period of July 121 through June 3023. Fiscal year 2122 is showing a deficit of 1.1 million and fiscal year 2223 is showing a deficit of 10.4 million. Primarily due to the loss of local funding. Both years will require the use of reserves to be balanced, reducing the funding left. To the city and reducing the funding left to the city in case of an emergency. And staff will continue to monitor revenues and expenses monthly and provide council with quarterly updates. And that's the end of my presentation.
I want to thanks Erin for your presentation. I think that that really detail. I really appreciate that. I think that our all members of the council, we are aware of our financial circumstance. So, City Council, do we have any any western or concerns regarding our budget? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I don't have anything. I think this is we already talked during the. And I just moved to approve.
I have a question. Have we looked at, I mean, I know things are tight, but. We really looked at all the items as far as, I know, Erin, I mean. It's the old saying, have you sharpened pencils? And I guess in this case, have you sharpened the keyboards as far as areas we can? Tighten up or save money on. And then also areas, they kept, are there some capital improvement projects that can possibly? Be held up on? Do we need to do some of, are all these projects? Items that we have to do now, or can they wait? Have we looked at that more on?
Yes, if I don't mind, if you don't mind, Erin, let me start first, we can do that. With respect to C I P projects, for many, many years now. We've never used general fund to do projects with. All the projects we do C I P are mainly the restricted funds such as gas tax, measure M. C D B G and all that stuff, so it's not general fund. As Erin mentioned earlier, with the with the new local measure. We've, since we adopted the new local measure, we spent about 6 million dollars out of that. But before that local measure, the general fund did not spend $1 on C I Ps. So that's not really impacting the city budget per se. The other thing I wanted to say is that if you recall, or you probably heard that. This city a couple of years ago had, we had two rounds of layoffs and then early retirement and golden handshakes. And then as a result of those two activities. We we've definitely lost a lot of personnel to that, for example. The yard used to have about 75 people at the time, now we're down to about 50. And we never filled those positions. So I want to say we are definitely bareborn as far as cutting costs and all that stuff. So with that, I'd like to turn to Erin, Erin, do you want to have anything to add to that?
Only that we do look every year, we go object by object in every. Program and I've done that, I've done averages of the prior three years, we've cut anything that hasn't been spent. We have each department look at everything they're spending and try to remake reductions. We will look at vehicles to see if we don't need them, if they don't, if they have low mileage, if we can, and if we can return them. But I would say the majority of our budget is personnel. We are very lean in the operations and maintenance department, we have some contracts. And a lot of our costs are related, the increases are related to those contracts and we can't do anything about them. Like O C F A or something like that, but I do. I personally look at every single object and I know that other departments do as well.
And then if I may add, also for the fleet and the cars for the city. For the last few years now, we went to a leasing program, which has been saving the city a lot of money. And then this last year, we even went to the blacks and whites. P D cars are into a leasing program. And that is really working very well for us and we are saving a lot of money doing it that way. So we always look for ways to really do things to save the money, but you know, like Erin mentioned, mostly is personnel now.
Like we mentioned before, it's like now. We don't want to wait until the end or we gotta, you know. You know, we run out of money at the end, there's ways we can save now, we gotta look into cost cutting before it's too late. The other thing I want to talk about, ask you on your. Supplementary supplemental request. As far as the. I think it was the item for the. The community outreach coordinator, part-time. That's on on made him K. So that's gonna. Is that gonna take, I think you mentioned, is that gonna take place of the? City net?
Yes, the police department. Asked that if we can fund them two part-timers. That would replace the city net services. They think they can do the same job with the with two part-timers and this is what this request is for. Do we have anybody from P D who would like to address that also?
Difference, the difference and the but and the difference and money. Between the that part-time and city net, like what would the difference in the monies be in that?
Yes, Ma- Ma- Vic, you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to explain to you that those two positions will be funded by an existing grant that we have. Which would probably cover about three years of service from those two part-time positions. So essentially, they are grant-funded and although we are ultimately looking at. Replacing the city net contract, if these case workers. Actually accomplish what we're wanting them to accomplish. Then we would know at that later time if we should in fact retain city net or not, but at the meantime. We do have the grant funding, the two positions to try out the model.
Okay, and were they be able to, like you just mentioned. From what I understand, from talking to. Officer or homeless liaison officer Perez. That city nets kind of like the go-to and finding. Facilities, finding beds for homeless people.
Yes, so they definitely are connected with various social service agencies. And they are well-connected, they're also being utilized by surrounding cities. So they do have the expertise and the connections and network needed to achieve those things.
We wouldn't lose, we wouldn't lose. We wouldn't lose service, like quality of service and going this route.
No, because right now how we would do it is do it in tandem. Have city network alongside the services of these two case workers and see how that goes. And then we will tweak the model as needed.
Okay, thank you, Marvic.
Yes, you're welcome.
The other thing I want to talk to ask you about was. The the position you're requesting for. Assistant city, well. The community. Economic development. Slash slash city system two?
Yes.
I know we talked, we had conversations about this, but. Can you please explain to me or to the council? Some examples of what? You have in mind? that this economic development person was going to tackle right right away? What do you, what do you have in mind?
Yes, thank you for that question. For for many years now, in my opinion, and I've been with the city, as you know, I think economic development has been a weak, weak point with the city. We can do much more what we've been doing. We just did not have the personnel for it, in my opinion. My target would be Westminster Boulevard. As you know, you know, we have a long frontage of Westminster Boulevard that are old buildings that we need to get involved with the owners, bring the owners together and then have them develop such size and for the city to provide as much need as we can and as much help as we can. So Westminster Boulevard is definitely my number one priority. The second priority is Beach Boulevard between the twenty two and four oh five. I think there's a lot of opportunities there. We just have to reach to the home home property owners, bring him to the table, bring him to City Hall, discuss what they can do and then what the city can provide. We've seen a lot of projects that's taken place in Stanton along Beach Boulevard. So why not us? Why can't we do the same? We need to definitely take the lead on that. And that's why in in the four months I've been in the city manager office now, that's where I think the need is. We need definitely the economic development to move. I also see a lot of opportunity, a lot of, a lot of potential for us to bring new restaurants into town, you know, and and new businesses into town. And then from my experience before, we used to attend a lot of conferences, international and Shabik Center's conference and all that. We haven't been doing that. So I need somebody who I can can definitely focus in this area. And then we can go and then bring developers in, bring restaurants in, bring businesses in. And that's where I'm really focusing that request on. And now, of course, that position and those duties is going to take time. When when you go out and reach the property owners, that person probably will not be ten hour days or eight hours day full time. In the other, in the rest of his or her time, is going to be assisting me in my city manager's office. And that's why I'm recommending economic development slash assistant to the city manager.
Yeah, I agree with the city manager.
Yeah, no.
The city council, we want to hire like full time or part time of economic development specialists. I think that there's a lot of opportunity on Westminster and Beach.
No, I thought I agree, but the thing that I want to talk to you about is from what I gather is this, and I want to talk to council about this, from what I understand, you know, is that and I don't want, I want to ask Alexa about this is that Alexa has a comes from an economic development background. You know, if we want to add this, this person, I think maybe we should have this person be under Alexa. And we already have currently, we already have a somebody who is very, very good and has a lot of experience and has a lot of relationships with a lot of elected officials and people help us who's already assistant to the city manager. And Adolfo, how come he can't have him continue to do that job? And have economic development person be under Alexa and hire that person to work with Alexa, under Alexa? You know, I mean, it seems to me that that would be most effective. Would we have a talent and pretty, you all know Adolfo. And you know how good he is. He's just a, I mean, he's just a world of knowledge and he's a he works his butt off. You know, you all know him. You know how good he works and he's already doing a great job. He has a lot of relationships built with a lot of our elected officials throughout. And he's already helping, he's already in that position. So why not keep him there? And have this economic development person be under Alexa. It seems like she has a background of economic development. And I think that would be great. And I think that'll be most, most helpful. I just, I think that will, it just makes more sense for me.
I'd like to say something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I semi agree with you on that. And I'd like to also speak on that subject of economic development. So I I think you should definitely open it up for R F P, for people to apply. And I would like to see if Alexa would like to apply for that position. But I don't think economic development should be under community development because she's really got her hands full. As you know, community development overseas, planning, building, correct me if I'm wrong, Marwan. But that's exactly, I mean, she's got, she's overseeing a pretty large, you know, I mean, pretty like I said, she's got her her hands full with that. And so I think that for me, economic development director or manager should be is a very, very important position. And you want to get someone, I believe we need to get someone full time. And you know, that is really, you know, that person is going to bring in revenue for our city or at least be the liaison to go out and, you know, be the face of our city and contact developers and be proactive and not just sitting there waiting for developers to come to us. And so I, you know, that is something that if Alexa, I know I've worked with, I have the opportunity to work with Alexa and got to know her quite a bit in the last, I would say, lost track of time, but I'd say at least a year, year and a half since Jeff left, our assistant city manager who left about a year and a half ago. So I I mean, I find Alexa to be very competent. I really think that if she likes the job, that's something that she could apply for. So in regards to my comment regarding assistant to the city manager, Marwan, I really think you need someone who is going, you need a good, a strong assistant city manager to help you. I see I see the city manager as a generalist, you know, and I see the assistant city manager as a specialist. So that person is going to do, is going to focus on things that to to let you, to allow you to focus on your things. So I really don't think you want to combine economic development, which is a very important position with another very important position like A C N. So I would not take that position away, assistant city manager away. We already all agreed, I think, long ago that we need an economic development person, a manager, a director or whatever the title may be. But I think that that those are very important positions. I would not combine it with assistant to the city manager. And you need a good and a strong A C N. So I'm sorry, I disagree with that combination.
No, I agree with, I totally agree with you there. I've been pushing for that for a while, but I I think we need an assistant city manager. I think personally, great.
Yeah.
First, as all the knowledge needed.
I said, if, would, would, if I may, with council permission, another model we can go with is with the, if you like to stay with the assistant city manager, then maybe that that position will do the economic development, will be assistant city manager.
But that, that is doable. I believe that is doable. We have seen, you know, we we've seen assistant city managers that are, you know, great economic development people as well. And I would say if, you know, but that's got to, he or she's got to have a proven record. We can't just take someone and make that mold that person into, we're not gonna, we don't want anybody to be on a learning curve for either job. So what I'm saying is that if that person comes with an economic development background and that person's been doing that, then we want that person to be doing, you know, to kind of having this lateral move, you know, coming over to Westminster. But we're not going to have anybody who's going to come and learn on the job, on the job training.
No, if if I may, actually, with the, what I'm proposing, I'm asking for somebody with four years of experience in economic development. So with council permission, if you decide to let me do A C M and economic development, I would respectfully request to let me change the job description for A C M that we have now and add to it the experience that's required for economic development. I think that would work beautiful.
Well, say that again, repeat that, Marwan.
I would, yes, like I said, I can definitely work with an assistant city manager slash economic development manager. However, I would like to take the job description that we have now for the A C M and modify it in a way to make sure I add to it the four year, minimum four year experience in economic development. This way, we only have people who are qualified to apply for the job.
Did you say forty years? That's probably, that's four, four years?
Yes.
And you said, I heard you say forty years.
No, no, four.
But you know what, for me, I I don't know if you're going to have, how many people are you going to find with both?
Oh.
Well, so I would like an A C M to be an A C M, an economic development person, to be an economic development person. And if that happens to be, if there's one person who's good at both, then okay, you know, great, then we could like combine.
Can I speak? Well, the way, the way that I see it is first of all, I I think that we we are, it's better for us to give the recommendation. But at the same time, I know that if my one want to proceed that way, let's say, if, correct me if I'm wrong. But we are concentrating on two of the position that are very important to the the city right now, which is the H R, human resource and economic development. And we know that, you know, we are concentrating on that and we are hiring the H R, which coming in pretty soon here. And if my one, and then back, I think back a while ago, we were thinking that the the A C M, we can put it in the back burner for now. And then, you know, we we can get the 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 economic developer to come in and and and, you know, get us going. Until now, we have not even get that. And I think it's very important that we concentrate on that. And the way that if the manager, you know, that's the reason why we hire city managers for it, for, you know, to run the city. And it's okay for us to give the input, but I think ultimately the decision has has to be under the city manager, you know, let him have a choice of carry out his decision. And if he can, if he didn't make it or he, for some reason that he screw up, then that's his fault. But we have to trust, we have to entrust him for the the, I I believe that the way that he's doing is trying to save the money for the city. And and at this point here, he think that he can handle it, then why not go ahead and 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 let the, you know, hire the economic developer to, you know, to work on that. And at the same time, you know, help him with the additional work that he he need. So, you know, I I think that we have to give him the liberty of, of, you know, making his decision as a city manager.
I had a question for our city manager. So Marwan, is anywhere that you can explain to the city council between economic development person and assistant city manager position? Which one is more urgency? And which one is more high demand for us at this moment?
I I believe, I believe the economic development manager is very important at this time. Like I said, we've been lacking that for a long, for many, many years. And I know we've lost a lot of opportunities out there. That's why as a new city manager, I would definitely like to capitalize on that and start doing something. Like I said, you drive down Beach Boulevard, you look at Stanton, they've been doing a lot of projects. Why not Westminster? In order to do that, we need that person. We need that economic development. And I would like that person to report to me. Because this way that he or she can be focused on that. And then what I'm saying is that that person is not going to be, gonna have forty hours a week of economic development duties. I guarantee you that. I I know that. So in the in the balance of the time, then then he or she can help me in the city manager's office. This is how I'm looking at that. Now, whether that position is assistant city manager slash economic development or economic development slash assistant two, I can work with both. The difference between the two, there's a savings of what, fifty thousand dollars a year? So so that's, that's what I'm recommending in the budget is to save fifty thousand, bring somebody to do economic development and assistant. Or we can bring economic development slash assistant city manager and that would work too, you know, so so that's my plan.
I brought this topic up. First, the reason we're talking about this vice mayor is because it's on our agenda. That's the reason we're talking about it because our, it's on the city manager requested our direction. And I agree, we do need a economic development manager. But isn't that, that's a standalone position? And I don't think it should be combined with the assistant city manager. It should be two different positions.
Let me ask you, Marwan, do you, how do you feel that, you know, if we, if we go with your recommendation, do you have confidence that you can work with the 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 economics development and 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 our, you know, assistant to city manager? Do you think that you confident that you, it can help you with your job?
Yes, absolutely. And like I said, the reason is that the economic development at the beginning, it's not going to have full time work to fill the time because when you go out to the property owners and you bring them in, you schedule the meetings, there will be some free time in there until we get these people together. Now, in the mean free time, this is when I can get my help in the areas I need help and then assign the duties. Now, whether it's assistant city manager or assistant two, I can work with both, whichever the council likes, no problem with me.
Marwan, I don't want you to use the economic development director as your, you know, high paying secretary. Okay. And it's, you know, you're thinking that this person is going to go out there and make appointments to talk to business, the business community or business owners. You think that's all they have to do? Then you're really wrong. This person is going to bring in a lot of money, is going to, you know, look at the development projects, the projects like such as the Westminster Mall that we have pending and sitting. And I saw because we don't have anybody and, you know, we drain a lot of staff hours because we didn't have a dedicated person for such, you know, for all these development projects. And so don't think about that, you know, forget about the fifty thousand dollars. That person is going to find, is going to earn his own money. Okay.
Also correctly.
I'm not going to worry about that.
Also, correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, but I believe we we highly value Jeff at the time. And he held both position, I think, assistant city manager and as well as the economic development, right? Am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
So that, basically, what you do is the same thing that we did before. And we don't have any problem before. So that's, you know, if if you're confident about it, I think that, that, you know, the council should respect that.
Can I say something? I mean, I I heard, okay, thank you very much. I mean, I patiently waiting and listening carefully for each and every council member express, it's her view, but but I do agree with Councilman Menzo and Councilwoman Kimberly Hall point of view. This city need a real assistant city manager to work with the city manager. Two, number one, stop the bleeding from City Hall. Stop all the lawsuit. Stop all the lawsuit, protect all the city employees, and maintain talent so that we can move forward, okay? This is a time for you to stop running into the forest and do all the work. This is the time to rise above the forest, watching over all the trees. You need a real talented individual that you can trust, who can work well with you to be your right hand and a left hand man, depends, to move the city forward. This is not the time for you to have everything in one hand and be a one-man show. Doesn't work that way, you need the team. You need everybody in the city hall to support you, support and respect you, all your decision, all your vision. This is not a time, this is not a, no longer a one-man show. You need a real city man, assistant city manager. You know, if you wanna go to the moon, great, okay? I love that vision, but first, you need to get yourself off, escape gravity first. Build a vehicle and get you yourself off, you know, to the atmosphere. Get to orbit and then then you find another vehicle to get yourself to the moon. But right now, you're not there yet, we have, the city is still bleeding. There's so many problem that we need to taking care internally. And we need you to fix the city with your new leadership. Economic development, great, wonderful idea, but this is like, you know, wanting to go to the moon. But we barely get ourselves off, escape gravity, seventeen thousand mile per hour, engineer, you understand that? We we not, we're not going seventeen mile, thousand mile an hour to escape gravity yet. So, you know, now we wish to go to the moon, okay? We want to bring money to the city. We only has that problem. It always depends on the taxpayer money to survive. Yes, I I totally agree with you, I love that vision. But you need to have a real C M to take care of the business, okay? Again, confident with city staff, and at the same time, we retain talent. We don't want talent to find another green grass and leave the city. Well, we, I think we have a via the municipal code, right? That that the city attorney, if you can correct me, I'm I'm around. There's an M C code to say that, you know, the city manager, before you make any organizational change, you have to consult with the city council, is that correct? Question?
Yeah, the city manager fills the positions, but the council decides if there is a position. And that's what the discussion is right now. So he is consulting with you right now to say, do you want assistant city manager, assistant to the city manager, or an economic development manager? These are all three different positions that he's looking for.
Yeah, thank you very much, okay. So right now, I think the 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 direction of the city council is you need to have an assistant city manager, okay, focusing taking care of business. Your right hand or left hand man or woman.
If I may add to that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you three months to come up with your team, a team. I am not.
Appreciate it. Kimberly, let me, let me finish with Marwan real quick, okay? That's, that that is our number one concern. We just free up eighty-four thousand dollars, I mean seventy-four thousand dollars, because our lobbyists quickly reside, so we have that money to hire a qualified assistant city manager. We can find someone internally, I mean, within the city, that's great. We have to go and and get somebody else from from outside to come in and work well and and manage the city the way it's supposed to be. And that's a wonderful, even better, okay? So either way, I'm not gonna tell you, I don't think that the council should tell the city manager what to do, who to hire, okay? And we know how that go when we start telling the the city manager what to do, how to hire, and it's really nothing but problem. Okay, I'm sure we all experienced that, and it's not fun, isn't it? So, okay. Economic, economic development person, we can, once we get ourselves, you know, we stop the bleeding, then we can talk about that. You can have the person, choose a person carefully and start working on it, okay? I agree with Kimberly Hall that we don't wanna use the high-paid, you know, secretary. Come your, you know, go to, you know, do some errand for you, that that's not what we want. We want some, some people have talent, independent thinker, who can go out and see things, okay? Take your input and run. And I would like to acknowledge, you know, one of the speaker, they want to public comment, and I think it's rain talking about the, you know, we, then no transparency in when we declared a fiscal emergency. We all know what we, what the direction, but we didn't really clearly state it, so I just wanna acknowledge that. Go ahead, Kim.
So, yeah, because I'm going to point out, when we get to item five point four, I will point out to you why you need an ACM. And so I I really think that, you know, three months for you to, because you've already had, how many months now? Six months or five months? So plus another three months, put together a team. This can't be, you know, your team can't be just you, so I don't know who you've hired, but I don't think you've hired anybody. So I know you took away that assistant to city manager. If you wanna take that away, that's up to you, but you really, really need an ACM position. So I'd like to see some movements in the next three months, if I may ask of you.
Yes. If 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 this is the council wish, I would be glad to work with that, no problem at all. So if if the council wishes for me to bring ACM and hold off on the economic development, I'm I'm willing to work with that, no problem.
Marwan, Marwan.
Yes.
Instead of assistant to the city manager, I I'm coming back to Chat position before. I don't think any of our council have a problem with Chat being ACM as well as slash economic development director.
He actually had the.
He is the city manager right now, right? He's the city manager for what, last hour or something?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a step back for him, isn't it?
Let me say this to you, because I worked with Chat ninety-nine percent of my time, and, you know, I say until, until Chat left. I worked with Chat, so I know Chat's ability. First of all, he came on board as an economic development person. Until we started reducing our budget and cutting our budget, he then, you you know, because he had the ability, he was already in-house, and he showed the ability to 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 carry on, you know, the ACM work. So that's, that's why he became the ACM, the assistant city manager, but he was still doing economic development work. So that's how that came about. So for those of you who were not here, you know, a couple of years ago or three years ago, when, you know. So I just wanna say that the both positions are really important. And then also, you have to look, you have to look at yourself also, you know, look from within to see, you know, as an, as a city manager, you know, what are your strengths? What are your weaknesses? We all have to look at ourselves and and, you know, critique ourselves. And so therefore, you need to find, you need to find an ACM that's gonna complement your abilities. Not to say that you're, you know, no one's gonna be able to do everything, you know? And so I would say that you also need to have someone like an ACM, who is gonna be, you know, not necessarily a right-hand person like, you know, secretary or a chief of staff or anything like that, but I meant, like, that person is going to take on a lot of your work that you're, that you're doing or maybe not doing right now. Okay, so like I said, so you, when when we get to five point four, I'll point out some of those duties for you. If you don't know what your ACM is gonna do, I can tell you, he's gonna have, he or she's gonna have, you know, handful.
I think since he's looking for a direction, we can direct them to 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 hire an ACM and also an economic development person at a, you know, like you said, giving him three months, we can direct them to that and he can hire that person. We can direct to hire him now, but.
Right.
So you can give him, you've given him three months, so you can start that process now. So we can just add it to the item K. So direct them to add the assistant city engineer, assistant city manager, economic development. And then you also need, on there is missing the transportation manager, correct?
Yeah, I know, that's, that's in the budget, the reason is not listed on that list. I'm sorry, I missed that the other day, is because the job description for that position is fine. We are, we just listed the ones that we needed to modify the job description for.
Okay, on that one, I had another question for that one, so I'm I'm concerned about that. So, you know, we work with him pretty, you know, he's involved in a lot of, lot of, a lot of pieces. And he's involved with a lot of grant funding and working with, you know, I know he's involved with with our elected officials, like with senators, our Senator Humbert Loenthal. So he's still gonna be able to have access and and work with council. Because I think our previous council, before my time, I think he was counsel, previous counsel directed him to be able to have access and work with council, is that correct?
And 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 that will continue, no problem. As as a transportation manager, he will always have access to the elected officials, state, federal, local, county, definitely that's gonna continue to be the case, no, not at all, no problem.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but who who are we talking about here?
We're talking about Adolfo Ozeda, he's our transportation manager.
He's pretty valuable to our team.
Yeah.
An expert in grant, grant funding, he can find, he's a, he's a, he just, he gets in there, he finds those and he's a.
Well, I think, I think, I think Marwan already said about it. I mean, he is still, you know, in his current role as transportation manager. I I don't disagree with you that he, he did a lot of, you know, of the work for the city, but I don't know where you're coming from. Are you recommending him for something else?
I'm asking a question.
Yeah, and if if I may, if I may, we actually did modify Adolfo's position and title to reflect what he's doing, because I know for the last couple of years, the job description did not reflect what he does, but this budget does reflect what he does as well as the the pay for that.
Correct.
And that that's been taken care of in this budget.
Thank you.
All right, so vice mayor, are you willing to revise your motion that based on the demand from the city council that our city manager will hire economic development director or manager specialist and assistant city manager? That would be two position add into our budget, am I right?
My, my belief is that, you know, the the city manager was hired for his, his roles is to, you know, to fulfill the the job for the city, and he has to, has to have a vision for that. That's the reason why we all hire him. At this point here, we, you know, we can give him the input, but ultimately, he has to be the one who make decision for that. So, you know, and and based on the ability that, based on the thing that we saw before, that Chat can can do do a job, you know, for the city, I don't see any problem. If he find, he feel confident that he can, he he can find a person who can help in him in that role, then that's his decisions. So at this point here, I, you know, I, I'm okay for 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 him, because we trust him, we have to entrust in the city manager.
All right, so I heard from our city manager, I think he willing, he willing to hire assistant city manager, and of course, the city council, we go to hands up, we we respect him, we go to pick, you know, whoever, the best qualified person inside or outside, you know, so will fulfill in a position of assistant, a a city manager and help him.
And one, one thing, one thing, one thing, mayor, I I, you know, from the discussion that we just had, I just want to remind what council member though already mentioned a lot of times. You know, we can, you know, give out the input, yeah, but at the same time, please don't try to recommend somebody else for for the job that that that, you know, because that's not the right thing to do. We can, we can actually say that, okay, we need to have this person, that person, or that disposition. I mean, this position, that position, and we can recommend that. But please, don't go into detail and saying this person is, you know, have experience about this. You know, we try, we can try to promote a person into the position that we are talking about. That's what I'm, I'm trying to be careful about it.
Yeah, I I hope we, we all, all the council member and the mayor, again, we can all walk out, talk, you know, instead of do all the talking, so, thank you.
I agree with the vice mayor on that last part about that, sorry, that was my bad. But I would like to make a substitute motion to approve this with the amended at the end.
Let me, let me first clarify, we had a motion made by Vice Vice Mayor Charlie, but I don't recall hearing a second to that. So let's first clarify, is there a second? Your motion, and if you could maybe first clarify that motion.
No, 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 hold on a second, I asked the vice mayor about is he willing to revise his motion? If he, if he didn't want to revise it motion, then we have a substitute motion, so vice mayor.
Thank you very much.
We didn't get a second.
No, 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 I'm I'm going to ask a question before I can revise my my motion, okay?
Okay.
Now, Marwan, as a city manager, you are okay with the discussion with that the the council were thinking that you should have a separate position for the ACM as well as the, as the the economic developer, development?
Or if if this is the council, I'm sorry.
You know, you feel more confident that you can have two position handled by a person that you think that they, you you can, you're okay with that? How how do you feel?
If if this is the council's wish, I I am willing to the go ahead and go for ACM first, hire that position first, and then maybe come later and ask for the economic development as a second stage. I'm I'm willing to do that.
I, okay, I I hear you, but I thought that we think that the economic developer is something that's very important that we concentrate on first.
Yes, and and the the reason I'm saying this is my recommendation is that, again, when I hire the assistant city manager, if that person has economic development background, then maybe I can use that talent also at the same time and see how things goes. If that's not enough, then I need a separate economic development. I'll come back to council at a later date and ask for another position for economic development.
Well, in my mind.
That would be another month.
In in my mind, right now, the economic developer, development, we are far behind, okay? As as you mentioned, there's many opportunities that we have, but that we we didn't address. So, you know, I, I, to me, I think that we should concentrate on on the economic development first and then move on to the.
And and with the council permission, again, if I, if we decide to go with ACM, I would definitely like to use that ACM position for some economic development to start the process going. And then we'll see how things goes. If if I need another separate person, I will come back to council maybe in December and say, you know what? Things are picking up, I need another person for economic development, then we can do it that way.
With that, mayor, I withdraw my my motion.
And is it possible to get some input from Alexa? I don't know if she has anything to say, I don't know, this economic development position? Since she's probably the expert in this, in all of this.
Counsel and Marwan recommend, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can. You know, we we try not to operate in, you know, siloed, you know, situations here. You know, the idea is that we're all in this together and, and, you know, we all do things in different departments to help each other out. And and of course, I want to do that to whoever we would onboard to take on those responsibilities and and, you know, share those things so that we're all moving in the same direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
Well, we have Alexa on right now, but would I, could I ask you? If you, in your opinion, do you think we need a um. A dedicated economic development person, director or manager?
It's hard to not say yes, I mean, there's, there, there's infinite amount of, amount of things that, you know, that a person in that role could. Could take on, it just really becomes a function of, you know, what, what's most important, um, what, what we can afford, what. Direction the council wants, wants to go.
All right, then, uh, who's making the motion right now?
Um, yeah, I mean. Yeah, I do, I mean, we have that and then we also have our. I mean, a lot of things coming up, so yeah, and there's economic development, definitely, I think it's a full-time job, kind of.
But yeah, right now, right now, there's no motion on the table, so anyone can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as recommended with, with exception item K. To add the amendment of to hire assistant city manager. Under, instead of, instead of an assistant to. An economic, and also an economic development manager as well.
Okay, I second, and I'd like to add, I mean, would you mind adding that for the next three months?
And within, and within a three months period of time.
Okay, I second.
Have a question for uh Aaron. Um, I don't believe that we, for the budget that we approved today, uh, that include their the. Uh, the budget for the additional ACM or something like that, right? Do do you need to modify that?
Yes, it it doesn't include the budget, so um, I I believe, and and Christian, you can correct me, but I, or Christine, I think you could amend. The budget to add that position back and then I can make the adjustment and um. That would be the the adopted budget.
Yes, you could do that. If if we know the numbers, if not, then you could add the positions now and then come back. We're not gonna fill the position with right away, so we could come back and amend the budget. With that number if you don't know it.
The, well, the economic development um slash assistant to the city manager, I believe that salary would stay the same for the economic development manager. Or did it change, Marwan?
I I think, I think uh, the, I think this position, we want ten percent over the economic development. So we would take ten percent, you have ten percent savings in the budget.
Oh, I see, okay, um.
And then we already have the assistant, didn't we already have the numbers?
Yeah, but no, that wasn't budget.
Right, but but we have the numbers for it.
Yeah, we have the numbers for that.
Okay, so I think we could, we could go ahead.
Just one second and I will tell you what it is. At two hundred fifty thousand forty seven dollars. That's that top step, depending on what you're looking for, but that would be the maximum that would be um for that position.
What's the number one more time for the record?
Fifty thousand forty seven dollars.
And that is for what?
That would be for the assistant city manager.
That's.
That's that top step and and normally you don't hire a top step, but that would be the maximum.
And that's with benefits.
Two hundred and fifty, that include everything.
Correct, benefits, salaries and benefits, yes.
Isn't that? Isn't that the uh price of a, of the ci- city manager?
City manager even higher, a lot higher.
That includes benefits.
We would say up to, right? Up to, all right, okay.
They call loaded costs.
I can, I can tell you what the minimum is if you want me, let me find it in the um. Let me look at the, I just had the top step on my schedule, so um assistant city manager.
That money including cowpers.
It's okay, Aaron, that's okay, that uh, I think.
Actually, we have a combo assistant city manager, like when we were speaking about Chet, it was an assistant city manager slash community development. We have assistant city manager that's at a less um level, which is actually a little bit less than that. Um, so that top step would be.
Chet really. A lot of money. He said, oh, it's a lot of money, yes, because he, because he wear two hat, yes.
Right, um, so actually that, if you take out the the combo position, the top step would be at two hundred eight thousand. Eight fifty six, so it's it's quite a bit less when you take out the combo position.
All right. So we go to add about more than uh two hundred thousand, you know, budget.
I I just wanna make sure it's higher than the department heads, because it is a higher uh position than a department head, right?
No, I, 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 I think, I think some department heads makes more than assistant city manager, from what I recall.
Oh, really?
Yes. Especially the econo- uh, community development and public works. Cause it's, it's looked at as more responsibilities, really.
Yes, community development top step is higher than assistant.
And the public works, the directors. And the police chief, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you have to modify the the budget, how much more that you have to add in? Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
Probably more than two hundred.
If you were gonna go to top step, it's.
About two hundred.
Yeah.
Step, it's a hundred seventy six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So between those two numbers, between one seventy six and two hundred eight, depending on qualifications.
Right.
So we see more of a negative number.
Sorry about that, but we need, I think it's important position that we need.
It is.
All right, so that.
So I seconded.
Yeah, so we have the motion and second on the floor as uh recommended, yes.
So the motion that I have right now is, so it's a motion made by Councilmember Manzo, seconded by Councilmember Ho. And it's to approve everything as recommended except for item K. Um, in which the direction is to add the budget back for an assistant city manager at two hundred eight thousand eight hundred fifty six dollars. Which is the top step um and and uh and hire separate positions for an ACM and an economic development manager. So that is what I have for the motion.
Which also, and within a three month period.
Yes, yes, and it's uh within three months.
So, so one is the economic development measure, one is ACM?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Yes, okay, um, so. Okay, so it's a lot of resolutions to read, so it's.
I think you have to read it uh for a record.
I'm gonna breeze through this. The motion is to adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of Mayor and City Council of City Westminster, adopting and appropriating the budget. For the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three fiscal years and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two only. And authorizing the city manager to increase the twenty twenty to twenty twenty one operating budget. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, establishing the Article thirteen. The appropriation limit for the twenty twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. Adopt Resolution Number fifty entitled, a resolution of the Westminster Public Financing Authority, adopting the budget. For the twenty twenty one and twenty three fiscal years and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two only. Adopt Resolution Number nineteen entitled, a resolution of the Westminster Housing Authority, adopting. The budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty three fiscal years and appropriating funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty two only. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, declaring a fiscal emergency. Adopt a resolution entitled, resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, adopting the fund balance policy. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending Resolution Number five oh one six. The compensation plan for the administrative management and confidential employees, amending Exhibit A salary schedule and modifying the classification plan. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, amending Resolution Number five oh one seven. The compensation plan for Westminster Police Officers Association, Exhibit A salary schedule. Adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, approving a publicly available pay schedule as required by California Code of Regulations. Title two, section five seven zero point five. And adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, providing for a compensation plan. For part-time employees of the City of Westminster and approve the job descriptions for the following classifications. Assistant city engineer, assistant record supervisor, police record specialist part-time and community outreach coordinator part-time. And then, of course, based on the recommendation for the ACM and the um economic development manager positions. The resolutions in which those are reflected and the salary schedules will be amended to reflect the direction provided by the council. And that being said, roll call vote. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
That's from Romano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right. Next item. Five point three additional fund from County Orange for local outdoor dining facilities and. Accommodation. Manager, yes.
Yes, uh, Mayor Ta, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Um, uh, late last week when we were doing the budget, uh, we um, we got a. A notice through Councilwoman Kimberly Ho that the county has three hundred thousand dollars in funds. Uh, to be used for outdoor dining um, uh, in other parts of the city. And we had, it had to be on this in tonight's agenda because the county wanted to disperse the money by June thirty of this year. Uh, so uh, both Councilwoman Ho and myself talked to the office of uh. Andrew Doe and um, they definitely said the money is for the City of Westminster. If the council chooses to uh accept or adopt the, this idea. Uh, so of course, we did not wanna lose this opportunity. This is, this kind of supplements what we have done on the east side of town. Uh, to bring in, in about, I believe, half a million dollar, so we could not say no to this money and. With that, I'd like to turn to Councilwoman Ho to add some more information on that, if you don't mind.
I don't have a whole lot more to add, except for just as you said, three hundred thousand dollars and um, I had expressed interest. Um, when I um, you know, earlier, months earlier regarding my um. Interest in doing something on the west side, if there was any money left or any money at all that we could have. So I was uh very, we're very lucky to be receiving three hundred thousand dollars. So my thoughts are, we should be doing something on the west side. Um, and because we don't wanna forget, um, our businesses on the west side. And so um, that's it, and I'd like to see if staff could look into uh a location. Or, you know, what whatever area, I'm gonna leave that up to staff, uh, to, you know, um, present to us. Or recommend to us how to use this money.
Absolutely, yes, I already talked to Alexa about that, we're gonna start looking at possible locations, possible ideas, how we're gonna. Uh, let let as many restaurants and uh or organization know about this. And then we will come back to City Council with a recommendation on how, how best to use this money.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I already, this is a really good item, really good item, one of the thanks uh. Councilmember Ho for working with the County Orange. I think that, you know, it's really good that our city, we go to receive additional fund. For our local dining and I let Councilmember Ho to make a motion. If she wished to.
I'd like to make a motion to uh approve the additional or receive additional funds from County of Orange. For local outdoor dining facilities and accommodations.
I'll second it.
All right.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you to Councilmember Ho with, and also, um, you can thank for me, uh. Supervisor Doe for um reaching out. Off and getting us these funds, uh, I think it's great for our business community, hopefully they can. Be some help in trying to recover some lost business. And hopefully, we can get some businesses to uh take, partake and. And possibly, possible events and uh, and help out and hopefully we can, now that we're gonna. Start opening up and get people out there and start. Supporting our businesses, get out there and have some, some good food, get some shopping going, so thank you, Councilmember Ho.
All right, we have a motion and second on the floor regarding this item.
Motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo, and that's to receive. Uh, authorized to receive the three hundred thousand dollars in county funds to further expand outdoor dining opportunities in other parts of the city. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Romano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, uh, next item, five point four, this is lady who can start a contract with TD Strategy. City manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening again. Uh, following the uh discussion that took place at the last council meeting of May twenty six. Um, uh, I gotta know, the next day almost got a call from uh Mr. Debb. Who said that he wants to uh, to definitely uh, in or withdraw from the contract. And he sent a letter uh to that effect, that's included in the staff report. Um, also, there's some, been some questions out there, I also uh, answered in the report. Um, the amount of money we, uh, first of all, the contract was signed, I believe, uh, April twenty ninth. And then uh, uh, there were some questions, how come we paid him for the month of April? And the reason for that is the, uh, the agreement was really started on the twenty third day of March. And then the first time, we, as we were working on that, it was signed on March twenty fourth, however. It went back and forth uh until we got everything straight, like, for example, the first version. It had his social security number in it and we did not want that to be public information, so. We changed that, we asked for more information on the insurance that was required, so back and forth. And by the time this doc, at the same time, uh, Mr. Debb started working on the, on the contract. Cause you see the first report I got was April fifth, I believe. Uh, so that's, this is why the, the April twenty nine versus uh, versus the uh. The, the payment for the uh, for the month of April. So, and then as far as the amount of money, uh, he was paid the, for the month of April in the amount of seven thousand dollars. And then for the month of May, he's yet to be paid, we haven't paid that amount yet in the amount of sixty four hundred dollars. Uh, and then for the month of June, there's no services that took place there. Uh, again, as far as the scope of work, uh, you know, I've mentioned it before and I'll mention again. Uh, I needed to get some help uh on a part-time basis for, from somebody who is going to. Keep an eye on the legislation activities in Sacramento, what kind of funding is available out there. Uh, also, what's coming up through DC and all that stuff, especially in this era where we have the, a lot of funding being. Given to us or or being provided uh with COVID and then all that stuff. So that that was really the main intent and then uh, uh, some cities have a specific person to do nothing but that. Uh, to uh stay on top of legislation activities, it's, it could get complicated sometimes. And that was, that was my main intent, is to stay on top of that and to do nothing but that. Now, as far as um, like I said, one of the first thing that we were able to achieve as a result of that. Um, and again, I wanna clarify something. Uh, this contract didn't really include for somebody to actually fill the applications for the grant funding out there. And that's never the case, really, even when you hire, we've hired lobbyists before with DC. That's never the case where the lobbyist will actually get the pen and fill the application, no. The staff needs to still do the information, all the lobbyists or the person who's, who's helping you do that. Will give you, uh, tell you where, where, where are the money, what are the sources, where are the deadlines? Who do you talk to, who do you contact, and that's what it is, and as a result of this, really. The first thing we got out of this deal is when I was notified, I believe in the first uh week noticed that. April fifteen was the deadline for the earmarks. So jumped on that right away, worked with staff, we only had, I remember, two to three days to put an application together. And we were able to do that and then we sent that out to Lowenthal's office and Michelle Steen's office. And then, and then later on. And then also we had some other opportunities through like. The one point five million through Senator Tom Humberg, that. That one, it did, that one, we staff knew about it, well then, we were in the process. And then I get some calls. One of them was from Councilman Ty Doe about the opportunity for money through Janet Wing's office. So also we had only a couple of days to do that, we jumped on that. And we were able to submit seven million dollars in two applications to Janet Wing's office. And so, and then also. Again, what I really had in mind for this, the way I was thinking is really some bigger, big pictures also. And then I listed them in the staff report, one of them was, is that with redevelopment agency. The city, we lost exactly thirty-six million, sixty-four thousand, two fifty-two dollars. To the state when the state budget was in trouble and the governor said, I wanna balance the budget, so they took all that money away from us. Now, I, I wanted to question that, I said with seventy-five billion dollar. The surplus in the state funds, can we get some of that money back, can we get all that money back? Now. Who's gonna find that out, how are we gonna know who to talk to? You would need somebody to know Sacramento, know who to talk to, who to go to, so that was one of my goals. That was a goal of mine. The second one is, is very important, I think for, for the council to hear. Is for years, we've been hearing about this Westminster is a low property tax city. And then. Prop thirteen came and locked us in and then therefore we've been suffering all these years. Why can't we question that? So we're looking into that further, I found out that the, the one percent property tax we get from the properties. That pie gets divided between the government agents, the school districts, midway sanitation district. The County of Orange and then the city and, and then all that stuff. Westminster only gets seven percent of that one percent. And we are the lowest city in the county who is getting that, other cities are getting double that. Why, why not question that, why, who should we talk to, to, to talk about that, I know it's Sacramento. I know it's Sacramento, I know it's the legislators, so that was another goal of mine to see what we can do about that. The third one, and also I was had in mind is. The federal infrastructure bill and I know there's also a state infrastructure bill being prepared. So how can we maximize our, our revenue from that? And then also the last one, you know, as was mentioned earlier, is the cannabis. I know there's, it's legal now, I know there's a lot of state laws out there, I know there's a lot of dos and don'ts and allowed. So this is the kind of things I was looking for. In something like this, it's, it's, I know it's a lot of big ideas, but, but why not? You know, but, but, so I just wanted to explain that, that was my intent really. And nothing else, that was my intent to see and then, because you know, over the years, we've been really aggressive. Going after federal funding and state funding and all that and the record shows that. So that was just going along those lines, nothing else, so that. So, so that's, that's my, that's my report on this and now this contract is over and also if I may add. I did ask Mr. Dip to, that the council request your appearance in front of the council. To discuss the contract and to discuss what the achievement is. I have, I did not get an answer back, but I understand. Our city attorney did get a hold of Mr. Tyler and then I'd like Christian to cover that, if you don't mind.
City.
Yeah.
City attorney?
Yeah, Marwan asked me to, to reach out to him to try and get a response. He did end up sending me an email today, which says, regrettably, I must decline your invitation to speak for the upcoming city council meeting. Since I am no longer under contract with the city of Westminster. If you have any questions about the service that I provided while the contract was in place, please review the weekly reports that were submitted. Those reports speak for themselves as to the nature of my services and that's all he said. Thank you, thank you, Christian and Marwan, I said a. Thank you for the report, I just had a. I mean, I think you kind of understand now, after all this, kind of why this kind of blew up, I'm sure. Well, at least I hope you understand why this blew up. When things are done. Kind of like in the dark. You know, people react, you know, we have, we have, we're in the public. We work for the public and we have a public to answer to. So. You know, I think this is a thing about. An issue of perception and, and about ethics, you know. When you, when you have, when you put out the. A perception of doing, of something's going on, kind of shady. You know, people are gonna react and people are gonna question, people are gonna ask questions. When it's an, an issue of ethics, you know, we have people to answer to. I read Mr. Dip's letter as far as. Him saying that it's about political opponents. I don't think that's that at all, you know, I have. I don't have a relationship with Mr. Dip, I don't really, I really don't, I really don't know him. Yeah, I think he, it's very possible that he could have done a good job for us. But the way it was handled. You know, we would never know, you know. I, I don't have anything against him, I don't have any, I don't have no reason to have anything against him, he's never done anything to me. But the way it was handled, the way. Council, not all council members were made aware of this. And, and I have a question for council. Because we're under the assumption. That only two council members weren't made aware. Of Mr. Dip's contract, but I don't think anybody really asked if everybody was made aware. So I guess I'm posing the question to council, was anybody else made aware of Mr. Dip's contract? So I would like to know if any other council members were made aware of Mr. Dip's contract.
Not I.
So, thank you.
Nope.
So, so see that.
Aware of, I'm not aware of, and I think the city manager already explained, you know, he hired. Mr. Dip on his capacity, yes.
And I, and I'd like to add, and I'd like to add to that, not only this time, but a couple times already that I, that I didn't know anything about it. If I want to call, you know, bring you back. At the time that our interim city managers, Sherry. She actually hired Alexa as a director of. Planning and also hired Kathy Thompson as a interim for. We didn't know anything about it. I think there's another position, I, I, I know. At one time point that we have a closed session meeting and. All of a sudden that Kathy Thompson is there and then I remember vividly that. Council, Contras asked, who is that person, who is Kathy Thompson? And at that time, we were, got reported from the city interim city manager saying that she is our interim. You know, that. I, I want to tell you that I don't know why that this, that time and this time, we, we don't know anything about it, I, I totally agree with you that, you know. But I still, just, just go back, at that time, I asked. Sherry, interim city manager, but I still consider that, okay, it's under your, your. Jurisdiction, then I respect you for that. But to answer your question, it's not only this time, but the last time, we have the same problem.
Okay, thank you.
I want to concur with the vice mayor, you know, in the past, many of our. Former city manager.
Yeah.
They hire other consultant without informing our city council. And I can say that because, you know, I've been the. I've been here. More than anyone else.
Yeah.
I saw that, so I mean, like, I really appreciate that vice mayor brought up the issue. How come in the past, no council member asking the former city manager? So how come this time, you know, we asking our city manager because our city manager, he has. Responsibility and he also have his capacity to hire the consultant to help him to do a job.
Well, the, the difference of council, mayor, mayor and vice mayor. Is the perception, because this is not just. Not just anybody, this is somebody. That has a relationship with some of the council members, the ma, some of the council members and. That's what I'm talking about. That's what it gives a perception to the public of something's going on. And I think, I think that's, that's where we need to, as, as public officials. And our city manager is a public official. Should have had that and, had, should have taken that into account. When making that hiring and should have did it, did it out in the open. That Mr. Dip is not. He's not some unknown person. He is a, he is a public figure, a well-known public figure. So that's, that's the difference between the examples that the vice mayor gave.
I, I want, I want to add to my comment too.
I know, I know, can I, can I finish because.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go.
This is the difference and I, and I'm pretty sure. That that's, that you can be honestly say that that's the, the big difference here, okay? That Mr. Dip is not, is not, is not nobody. Okay, it's about transparency. And that's why the public. And the media made such a big deal about it. Okay?
Okay.
Because I, I'm not done yet, please, let me, let me finish.
Go ahead.
That's why it's such a big deal. Because whenever we do, whenever anybody does something. That looks, looks like something's kind of shady. People are gonna speak up. People are gonna question you, people are gonna hold your feet to the fire. And it's just natural, you know, we're public officials. Any, all of us, you know, us as council members and staff, city manager, we're all public officials, we have, we. You know, we, we signed up for this. We have the public to answer to. So it, it's just a given. And hopefully, and I spoke to the city manager and hopefully, this is a lesson learned. You know, hopefully that, you know, this is a bump in the road. Hopefully we can move on from this. But we do have to answer questions. You know, the other, I have a couple of questions that, that I keep getting asked. And I just need to have. Ask the city manager or. People keep asking me. Why are the, so we just cut a check to, so we signed a contract for TD Strategies. But why are the, the check that I saw, that we see on the public record made out to Tyler Dip?
We, we did look into that, I think the way. The way the sheet he submitted, when that shows his tax ID and all that. It does show Tyler Dip as the name, so I think something's related to that. But that's, that's why, I don't know if Erin can comment on that.
Yeah, the W nine said paying taxes as Tyler Dip, so that's why we wrote the check to him.
Yeah. But, but the contract is TD Strategies?
The, the contract has both, the T three strategy and also Tyler Dip as a CEO, I believe.
And, and before, before you hired him. Did you know that he was not allowed, that there was, he was. Could not lobby at the state level for a year since he, since he left the state assembly? Did you know he could not do that?
No, I did not know that, Christian might comment on that, Christian.
City attorney, please.
Yeah, I, I can't speak in detail as to the agreement, but I would say, yes, there is a one-year restriction, I think in looking through the. The scope that that wasn't the intent, was to do lobbying work, but. That's, and it's my knowledge that that's not what he did. I think he provided information to the city, there's some reports that he provided, which kind of indicate what sort of work he did.
Well, is that, was that with the impression that that was. That's what kind of we needed and that's what he was gonna do, that was part of his job.
Yeah, to formally go and, and lobby would have been problematic to, in terms of his own. Former agency, from my recollection on the one-year rule.
Okay. And, and. Okay, and then how do we come up with the, with the eighty dollar an hour pay scale opposed compared to what the county's paying him?
It just, it just similar to other contracts we have, like we are, we have a contract with. Retired city employee who's doing some IT work for us and we're paying her eighty dollars an hour. And that's, that's how we came up with the, with the number, really, it's kind of comparable to what other people are doing.
I did a point I wanna just make is just that, as a council member Ho kind of. Gave us an example today of the importance of relationships with. Our elected officials, elected representatives. You know, we already in the past have had. Not only council members and mayor, and our mayor and our staff. Have had long relationships with, and our, like our senators, congressman Lowenthal. Supervisor Doe, I'm so, I mean, we, we, those are relationships that we should be building, that we are, we have been building for years. That's not something that we, we should have used somebody like Mr. Dip to, to do. Those are, as you can see, the benefits and Mr. Councilmember Doe. You know, with the relationship that he got some funding from Assembly Member Nguyen. You know, that's something that we should have been, we've already been doing, so. You know, those, that's why people are questioning that, those decisions of hiring. Mr. Dip to do something that we already have been doing. And, and our staff has been doing for a long time already. So, those are all different examples of why. Everybody, and this became such an issue. So, like I said. I'm hoping that this is just a bump in the road. Like I told you before. You know, I'm a fan of yours and I'm, I'm. I'm hoping for much success from you and, 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 you know, I'm hoping, you know, you and I work good together and just. You know, I'm just, I was really disappointed in this, the way this whole thing played out. And, and hopefully that we can learn from this and move forward. And. And just, just hopefully that, you know, like I said, it was just a bad thing and. You know, there's just a lot of questions still out there that people want answers for. And. You know, I know the other council members probably have some questions, but. Yeah, I mean.
I know.
Bad thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I do, I have something to say. First of all. Um, I, I'm very disappointed in our city manager. I'm really disappointed because. I think after last weeks or our last meeting, our council, last council meeting, we were here. We were, we were here for a long time, up to eleven, twelve, I lost track, but. I think you should have restore confidence, to restore confidence in your office. I feel you should have canceled TD Strategies after hearing, listening to. I feel you should have canceled TD Strategies after hearing, listening to what we said about it. And um, instead of waiting for TD Strategies to cancel us. So that's one thing I feel that if you, maybe you disagreed. Maybe you didn't do it because you disagreed with what was said. Um, so that's one thing I wanna say. Um, so you were men- you mentioned that you wanted to find money, where are the monies, et cetera? And um, that's why you needed that contract, you, you hired TD. But you know, this is the reason why I think you need an ACM, an assistant city manager. And I know we already decided that, but this is the reason why, and this item came after the other item that went to. So I'm going to say it again, that you really need an assistant city manager. Because that assistant, you know, your number one to four is very offensive indeed. To me, it's very offensive. So number one, you know, I know what RDA money is. And I know why we lost it. I know not why we got it. So RD, our, RDA money, thirty-six million, well, you know, I mean, back then, years ago, when our city, and I won't name names, declared this entire city an RDA, okay? And that to me is wrong, okay? I think that to me was greed. And then of course, when that money was taken away, then it, you know, obviously we felt that pinch. And um, now in, in you thinking, by you thinking that there's a surplus and that we're gonna try to ask TD Strategies to get the thirty-six million dollars back, I wrote here, good luck with that. Are you dreaming? I don't, I don't, we're not gonna get that money. Why? Because if we get that money, everybody else gonna have to get their money back too. You add that up. So no, we're not gonna get that money back. That would be just a dream. And then number two, okay, so the tax. So you know that our pie chart, okay? Everything is spoken for, every percent or, or every piece of the pie has been spoken for. To ask for a bigger piece of the pie and to have TD Strategies do that, I'm not sure if that is, that's far-fetched. So like I said, one to four is offensive to me. And somebody mentioned that and I say, offensive indeed. So, number three, so I mean, I wanna finish number two is that, so you know how hard it is? Okay, so it's, it's not going to be within the, um, this contract that you're going to make that change and, and take a bigger piece of the pie. Okay, so the number three is, when you talk about, you know, the anticipated federal infrastructure bill and the funds and you talked about uh, Loenthal and Alan Loenthal and, you know, the funds of the various branches of government, federal, state, et cetera. So I believe that, you know, when I called uh, county supervisor Doe's office, because we're District One and so I was looking for money and I know I put that out there and I said, hey, you know, this is what I'm interested in doing and so it was very nice of them to keep that in mind. And um, but you know, I think the ACM would be given this uh, task to follow up on all these monies. We shouldn't wait until somebody say, hey, you know, don't hire TD Strategies just to go and listen and, and then say, hey, I think there's money over there. So you know, go, go, go fetch it. So I think the ACM would keep an eye on, and I think in my, as a matter of fact, if you don't know how to do that, I'll give you a suggestion. Is you would probably make that, the ACM's um, job description, one of the jobs descriptions is to, hey, you know, every month or bi-monthly perhaps, connect with the various offices, Alan Loenthal and um, and Senator Umber's office, you know, and, and just once a month, twice a month, connect, share information, receive information, put it out there if you, and then maybe, you know, just, just open that line of communication. So that when there's money, you'll hear about it. So I think that's another reason why, you know, I think you, you can't do it. This is the reason, this is the reason why we need an ACM. We know that you've got your plate full. But that's not the reason why you, you need a, a consultant like this. And then um, the new laws of cannabis, et cetera, you know, I, I've asked our city attorney. It's, um, we do have city attorneys, I guess in his office, maybe not Christian himself, but then, you know, you've got people at your office, um, Jones and Mayor, you, you know, do specific research on these topics. And on topics of interest, you name the topic, they'll do it. So this is something that you just would not just randomly put together and, you know, like I said, one to four is very offensive. So then, the other thing is, you know, for me, it's all about moving our city forward. Okay, we had the recall, we had the infighting, we had all those things. And um, and everybody's witness, it's quite an embarrassment, but like I said, I'm willing to put all that behind me and I wanna move our city forward. So it takes everybody. And um, so I think it would be recommended that, I know that by right, you have the right and you maybe we'd be so that right and that power onto you as the CM, the CEO of this, you know, of this so-called company, um, to make those decisions of who to hire. But I think it would at least, I would expect you to email us, let us know, let us, all of our council people know if you're going to hire a person of controversy or may have some controversy. So I think that would be recommended for the future. And then, and I say, okay, so let's have some check and balance. So if you're gonna go hire someone and I rather not hear from the outside or it's a media, some media group or some, anybody from the outside, I would recommend that our city clerk, you did something that I'm, you know, maybe I will, you know, but something that our city clerk could email us a list of all new contracts. You know, once a month. I mean, I know you have such a list, could you compile the list? And if you don't get, if you don't have that list, well, you know, where's, where do you think they, they, they're pulling the record from? You're the record, the official record keeper. So you would have such a list. How about if we have that? And once a month, you email us, and you know, a, a list of new contracts, we don't care about, we, we're not interested in the warrant register, because we're getting that in way. We're talking about list of new contracts, so that there's some, just in case there's something like this happening and at least we're aware of new contracts. And then when, we're not gonna hear from people on the outside, that we should have this firsthand knowledge when called upon. So, you know, I, 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 I believe what uh, council member Montel said earlier. You know, we want you to be successful. We're not here to, to cut you down and, and, you know, I mean, not so quickly, um, I, shall I say, I'm not giving you really a report card today, but very soon. So I think you're gonna, but I think that because things like this happen, we wanna bring this up and to help you succeed. You know, so I hope, uh, you don't take it wrong, you know? I, I want you to have confidence moving forward and hire your people to help you where you need help. And we suggested those people and, and you know, this is something that we bring up to talk about so that it doesn't happen again. So I'm hoping that you could, you know, give me some confidence that it's not gonna happen again. That's all I'm looking for today. Can I turn the floor over to somebody else who wants to speak?
Okay, if I may. Um, well, you know, I, um, during the last council meeting, I already stated that I, uh, I was shy. And uh, to hear that, uh, to hear a question po- posed to me uh, from a um, very well-known um, newspaper reporter from the Orange County Register, asking me to confirm a rumor. And I was like, what rumor, you know? So I heard Tyler Dip was hired as a consultant from the city. And I was like, this cannot be true, because um, if something like that, I'm, I, I have very, I have confidence that uh, our city manager, Mark Wan, would definitely let the council know. Uh, because uh, no Tyler is a, a, a very controversial individual. Uh, he's a, he's a, he support the majority of the city council, you know, for the past uh, um, campaign, which is, which is okay, which is na- uh, natural. I mean, you know, we have, we support um, ally and, and, and politic, which is a completely okay. Nothing wrong with that. But the issue that I have, I, when I look at the um, issue, I see so, there's so many things wrong in so many different levels, that I did not know where to start. I see holes in everywhere. I mean, you know, i- i- it could not hold water in court, uh, anywhere. And so I call and talk to Mark Wan and you confirmed, you very calmly and confirmed that, yes, you know, yeah, we hired Tyler Dip as a consultant. And I was like, oh, it's okay, you have, you know, you have a right to do that, but I'd like to, you know, in my mind, I didn't ask him, but I'd like to, you know, listen to you, give you a benefit of the doubt and listen to your mitigating uh, circumstances. Why did you hire uh, this individual? I'm sure that you have the reason to, you know, I'm sure that you, you have his qualification, uh, his ability to uh, take care of business uh, on the city behalf. I'm sure you have all that reason. And uh, of course, you know, you move on, very happy to tell me that uh, that uh, that was a good decision and Tyler had credit, that will credit it to um, earmark. Uh, I'm not sure that's the correct word, but earmark. Uh, about um, eight point, nine point five million dollars from um, federal uh, funding uh, through the um, elected official, our con- congresspeople, uh, Alan Loenthal, Michelle Steele, and you mentioned Umber, so uh, I think. So, okay, that's good news. I mean, you know, I, I, you know, there's no reason for me not to trust our, um, newly appointed city manager. It is not, it's not a slide down in my mind and not to trust what you're telling me. But a couple of days later, I have a read from the newspaper, all the information that you've provided, we're totally, um, we're, we're totally, uh, we confirm that it's not true. Um, because the, the newspaper reporter then did her due diligence and contacted the uh, Alan Loenthal and all the elected official that was, um, member mentioned. And they totally saying that, hey, you know what, we uh, we did not talk to Tyler Dip. We, the city didn't reach out to us, we reached out to us. I mean, we reached out to the city of Westminster and tell them to fill out the application, apply for the, the funding, which is not being approved yet. Okay? I don't understand the procedure, but you know, so. So that's why I asked uh, the council to put this item on the agendas, so that you have an opportunity to um, present yourself, to provide mitigating circumstances. How you, uh, why and how that you uh, hire Tyler Dip to work for the city ma- um, of Westminster as a consultant? So I, if I, I'm gonna be very brief, I'm gonna ask you a few questions. And you know, I expect an honest and straightforward answer from you, you know, not, not, nothing, I just wanna, I'm on a fact-finding mission. And I'm not trying to embarrass you, just something I'm gonna ask a direct question, if, if you know, you uh, know me and then just ask direct questions, okay? Um, and I um, expect a totally honest answer. If something you feel uncomfortable, I rather you not telling me, refuse to answer the question, then give me some untruthful information. Is, is that a fair statement, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, who approached who to hire Tyler Dip to work as a consultant for the city?
I, I approached him. I approached him because as you, you, you heard my report, I needed somebody to really help at the state level. And knowing Tyler from previous years, he was a council member for many years and I worked with him before. And I know he is on the Midway City Sand District, I worked with him also. And I knew he was an assembly uh, for the state assemblyman. So I thought he would be the guy with the background that I really need to do this discovery type of thing.
Okay, how did you reach out to him? By telephone, smoke signal, email? How do you do that?
No, I, I, you know, I mean, since, since he was on the council for many years ago, we've, I had his number, he had my number, I would send him Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, Happy New Year and all that. So I, yeah, I did, I talked to him on the phone and I reached out to him.
Okay, so it, it, you were the, you decided to reach out to him?
Yes.
And uh, offered the job?
Yes. Well, I not offered the job right away to talk to him and discuss what I had in mind. And he said, yeah, that's something I can definitely do and help you with that.
Oh, okay. So did he tell, did he tell you he's been working as a consultant on the size, since the, our office?
Uh, I, I don't recall that, uh, whether he told me he's working for the, uh, whether he was, he told me for the county part-time or not, but he, he might have told me something, but that wasn't important to me, really, to, I just said, this is what I need and is that something that you're interested and you can help me with?
So what is, what is important to you?
Uh, it's, it's to uh, to understand the legislation that's going on in Sacramento. Uh, how can we find out where the funds are, uh, what are the deadlines, things like that? That's just like what I mentioned in my report. And I, I, I honestly, I thought he has the, the knowledge and the connections and the timelines and all that stuff.
So that's what you thought, or that's what he told you?
Yes.
Convince you?
Yes.
Yes, what?
I'm sorry?
You say, yes, what?
Did, did, he, I, I, that's what I asked for and he said, yes, he can do that.
Okay, so you thought that he have the qualification, the connection, the know-how to be a lobbyist for the city of Westminster, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if you call it lobbyist or a legislative analyst who can uh, research the legislation, uh, see what the deadlines are, what's coming down the tubes, things like that.
Okay, so um, so you know, the, you know about the ban that uh, legislators who left office, you know, they're not allowed to go reach out and contact that legislative body?
Honestly, I did not know that, no.
Okay.
I did not know that.
What, what, what?
And he, and he didn't, and he did not mention it to me.
Okay. Did you consult with the city attorney office?
Uh, on that, on that thing, no, but I, I didn't, I didn't even know to think of, because I didn't know that thing existed.
Okay, so you know the city attorney is a risk manager, right?
Right.
Is a go-to person, that's why we have a city, we hire a senior attorney to protect our interests.
That's true.
But honestly, you did not?
At the time, I did not see any risk in doing that. That's why.
Um, why do we, you mentioned something about you pay other consultant eighty dollars an hour? And you, and you propose that uh, dollar amount?
Yes. It's not, I, I, I don't pay that, it's through other department, through finance, I believe.
Okay, so you say that we are, we pay consultant in the past, right?
No, actually, as we speak now, we, we have some consultants working in the city, doing some IT work for us. And I believe the ongoing rate is about eighty dollars an hour.
Oh, okay, so you use Oh, okay, so you use. Consultant in other field, IT, information technology, and you translate that into political consultant or lobbyist?
Which which and 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 knowing, you know, knowing the market and knowing the professional services these days. That's how where the number is uh around.
Do you know that most lobbyists, a consultant, get paid per job? They don't get paid per hour?
It it depends. Uh we've had consultants before.
Do you know that? Answer my question, sir. Do you know that or you don't?
Uh no, no, I don't. Uh and I'm I'm trying to answer that too. We had lobbyists before. They were not paid per job or per uh thing. I know, I know Midway City had lobbyists. And they pay them a percentage of money they bring in. So it there's a lot of options, huh?
Midway City have a a lobbyist. Yes, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. Midway City, I don't know if it is now, but I know in the past, they had a lobbyist. And the agreement was, you bring us in a hundred thousand, you get a percentage of that.
Okay, so they have a flat fee?
Uh it's it's not a flat fee, it's a percentage of what he brings in.
Okay, is that different from when the hourly wages that we paying?
Yes, definitely. Because the hour the hourly rate, uh like like the contract states is twenty hours a week. And then he puts twenty hours a week, we pay eighty dollars an hour. That if he puts twenty hours, huh?
Do you know why? Do you know why most lobbyists get paid per job instead of hourly wages?
But 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 I, if I may, we had other contract with the city of Westminster. It was not like that. It was a monthly or an hourly rate over the.
Okay, I, okay, let me let me tell you, let me it's not, uh let me explain to you why. Very simple. They don't get paid hourly wages because most of the time they have nothing to do. They got paid per job or per percentage. Okay, because you get paid per the hour, guess what? You have to come, you have to be able to prove and build. And show how much you work in 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 for twenty hours a week.
Right.
Okay, I guarantee you that he doesn't spend twenty twenty hours a week working on all on that simple. Well, five paragraph reports, right? And you mentioned that Midway City have a consultant. Right? A a lobbyist?
Yes.
Okay, have you have you seen their report?
Uh no, and and I'm 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 saying about Midway City. Few years ago, that's what I remember hearing, but I'm not sure if they even have one now or not.
Okay, so do you know they provide that uh report to the uh the board director for Midway Sanitary District?
I I'm not sure if they do or not.
Okay, have you compared that report to what Tyler report to see is any, okay?
No, I all 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 my all my intent was is that I look at the weekly report and I see the information in it. And is that the information that helps me or not? That's what. And like I said, the first report I did. That's where I get the April fifteen deadline from. Otherwise, honestly, I would have missed that deadline. And that was the deadline to submit the earmark applications to Lowenthal and uh and the Michelle Steele.
Okay, so 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 the the uh the congressman Alan Lowen uh were less than truthful when he told the reporter that. He never heard from Tyler Dip. And he never in in his office, his staff, reach out to the city Westminster and asking. The city to apply, so what he was saying, telling the 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 newspaper incorrect? Is that what you're saying on record?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that. Tyler Dip, I'm not saying Tyler Dip reached out to the congressman office. I'm saying Tyler Dip told me the deadline. He must have heard it from somebody else through what maybe from through Washington channels. Because the earmarks is a program through Washington. So the.
You know that.
Huh?
So the the uh. So the tal- the the congressmen told Orange County. Or or Orange County Register reporters that they reach out to the city and tell the city the deadline. And hurry up and apply for that funding. So you're saying that the congressman was. Mistaken or less untruthful about that one?
No, no, he he could be right, but I know he didn't reach out to me. And maybe he reached out to somebody else on staff. But I didn't know that except from that uh memo that I received.
Okay, so how did how did Tyler Dip communicate to you, sir? How did how did Tyler Dip communicate to you? By email, by telephone?
By that weekly report. It's if you look at it, it's in that weekly report. That's how I found out about.
Do you know that Tyler Dip is a is an elected official for Midway City Sanitary District? Do you know that?
Yes, he's on the board.
Okay, good. Do you know that he representing the city of Westminster?
Yes.
Okay. So. You mentioned uh Janet Nguyen. Who's Janet Nguyen?
Okay, I I know she's a state legislator, yes.
She our 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 state uh assemblywoman, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, you should mention Janet Nguyen, okay?
Right.
So you you mentioned that uh assemblywoman Janet Nguyen reached out to me.
Yes.
Okay, and I told her to reach out to me as well at the three title mayor of the city.
Right.
Let the city know that.
Right.
There's funding available for our city, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did I reach out to you and let you know?
Yes.
And did you did you reach out to the assemblywoman Janet Nguyen?
Yes.
Get the funding?
Yes, well, within two days, we submitted seven million dollar applications. Yes, thank you for that.
Did uh Tyler Dip uh communicate to Janet, uh Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen or her office?
No, I not to my knowledge, I did not. I did not get any information from Tyler about the Janet Nguyen uh office info, no. It wa- it was only through you when you told me.
Do you know that they don't see eye to eye? They don't talk?
I did not know that, honestly.
Okay. Do you know that Janet uh Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen is representing the city of Westminster?
Yes.
Okay, you know, our 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 city can reach out to her and get all the information about funding, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
They do. The only thing, if I may, from my experience with other legislators. State, counties, federal, um um. Sometimes they don't have the time, the staff time, to really. Uh go after what you're looking after. That's why for years in Westminster, we had a lobbyist. Working for us at the at the in DC level. So we needed more than our uh senators at in DC and the. To reach out to those things and that's why. Uh that's why I'm saying that if we really wanna be aggressive. We need to get more help than our locals. And with all respect, and then definitely from now on, I will definitely. Reach out to them more often and see what kind of information. But if we wanna be more aggressive in getting the money, sometimes you need more more lobbying uh help from my experience.
Okay, as a city manager, you're a most powerful position in the city. Do you think it's um it's ethical for an elected official who representing our city? And then hire him and pay him a salary? To work as a lobbyist for our city?
I honestly, I did not think much of it and honestly, as a public work director. I never paid attention to any political affiliations or uh. Or I didn't know whether I can, I cannot uh hire a politician. Who was a, I did not know that and I and I admit, this is probably a mistake on my side. I and now I'm a city manager, I'm I'm becoming more aware of political connections and uh. Politics and all that, but before, I did not honestly spend time. I was focused too much on. On projects and public works and that didn't mi- mean much to me, honestly.
So uh so you know, at varsity level now, you're not to JV anymore as a public director. Public work directors, right?
Yes, and now now I know, now I know definitely.
Okay, um okay, so. As a city manager, you have a lot of people working for you, give you advise, you know, advisor and you know. People who willing to grab you and pull you back when you try to, you know, jump out the car. Uh moving car, right?
Yes.
You have a a big support group, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, you have people all around you, you know, give you in information because there's no way that you be able to know everything, is that correct?
That's true.
Okay. Is there anybody in the city in the city that that give you input about? Issue that you will face when you hire Tyler Dip to work as a lobbyist for the city?
Before before I did, no.
Nobody in the city? Say before, no. Hire him?
No, no, before I know.
Okay, so you're telling me that no, okay, so did you inform any staff? Your intention to hire Tyler Dip? Okay, anyone in the in the city? So that and 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 listen to that and 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 that person did not give you any input?
I I I I really don't know the details. All I know is that. I worked with that with the city uh city uh attorney. To get the agreement and then work with the city clerk to finalize the agreement. And that's really it. I'm not sure what kind of.
So you talk to the city, you talk to the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm not, I'm not sure, I uh there uh uh frivolous communication here, if I can ask uh the city attorney. Can I question what he asked? If you telling him and he asking you, is there frivolous communication here?
Yeah, I think probably from my standpoint. I was asked to, you know, I was presented that he wanted to do the contract. I said, you need to use the standard form. And pretty much the way it's structured is the city standard form with you attach the proposal at the end. And that's what he did, so.
Okay, there's there's nothing else. There there's no, you didn't get not.
I was not involved in making a decision on the contract at all.
Did he ask for your opinion?
Uh it as far as if we wanna get into like.
Risk management question.
Yeah, I think I think I would probably. I as city attorney and attorney-client privilege and those kinds of things, I think I'd prefer to do that in closed session. If we wanted to have that kind of discussion about it. Under under city manager review or something like that. Um but my my involvement here, this is not my decision. Uh this is something where I was asked about the form of the contract. So we I made sure it was on the standard form and that they attached the appropriate exhibit.
And okay, so, okay, thank you for questions. So uh Mark Wan, so basically what I'm hearing is you are single-handedly. Make the decision to hire Tyler Dip.
Yes.
Would you, okay, and you did not tell anybody? It 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 Tyler, Tyler is the first employee, I mean um. Contract, independent contractor that you hire?
Yes, we uh it's him and then we also, I signed a contract for uh. Our interim city manager Sheri Peaslee to help us with the some financing. Going on, so that we.
Okay, cool. Okay, um. There's so many issue about Tyler Dip. Okay, um are you familiar with the municipal code section five point zero eight? Point zero two zero, city attorney, could you help me with that?
Which code section you said five?
Five point zero eight, zero. Uh five point zero eight point zero two zero. This is license?
Yes, it's unlawful for any person to conduct, manage, commence, carry on, engage or in any trade. Calling business occupation or profession within the city without first obtaining a license there. Therefore, from the city, except as may be provided in this chapter.
Okay, so do you know that Tyler Dip have a home-based business in the city inside the city? Mark Wan?
No, I didn't know that.
Uh who responsibility to verify all that information?
Uh. Yeah, you mean as far as him getting a business license for doing the contract? Uh honestly, I I maybe I missed that one. Because uh over the years uh that I've been here and we we signed a lot of contracts. But uh I don't remember personally asking for a business license. From companies and things like that. That's probably why I missed that, but. But yes, I admit, I missed asking for a business license for him doing business in the city.
Okay, so.
Especially as a consultant, you know, maybe as a as a contractor or somebody doing actual work, then that would probably. Be more obvious, but as a consultant, that never crossed my mind.
Okay, so he he um Tyler have uh. Uh providing on the contract, he have uh he have a company name TD Strategy, that's right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the company. And with home base, you know, home base address in the city of Westminster, that's correct?
Right.
Okay, uh yeah, is that is that the city clerk, is is any way that you can verify and confirm that whether Tyler Dip have a business license in the city? Or anyone in the uh any staff will be able to can help him, have access to the system and help me with that? Because the last I heard, he doesn't have any business license. Alexa?
I would be able to look that up. I don't have access to it right right this second. But if you want, give me a few minutes, I can log back into my computer.
Okay, yeah, just so it's just to free to interrupt when you have the information, I appreciate that. Okay, so um. What is what a penalty, you know, how what a penalty for any resident in the city of Westminster? Conduct home-based business without a license? What's what's the penalty for that?
Alexa probably would know that because that's under her department.
It's a violation of law, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, yes.
Sorry, could you repeat the question? I spread login.
What what was the penalty for violating in the municipal code, uh business license required?
I would also have to look up a a penalty amount, I don't know.
Um. So Tyler doesn't have business license, okay? He have a home-based business. He submit the letterhead, he submits an invoice, okay? And then I I have an invoice laying around right here. And that was a five and at the bottom saying that please make check payable to TD Strategy. Okay. And I the last week, I saw a check uh written right here titled Dip. Okay, and that's why that's part my interest about his uh business licenses. Apparently, he doesn't have business license. You did not know that?
I didn't know that, no.
Uh apparently, did he tell you that he have a business license?
No. The the subject never came up.
Because you trust him?
No, I didn't. Actually, I didn't know he needed a business license really for this type of work.
Well, you are no longer a public work director, sir. You are a city manager, so it's just up to now. Or you know, you people who know work for you, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so, you know, I'm wondering why no one advised you that? There's a lot of talent in the city. You have an open door, you do you have an open-door policy?
Absolutely, and like I said, you know, in the the contracts we did before, like with consultants. Really, the the business license itself never came across my mind. Uh because like I said, we usually deal with bigger projects and. Usually, you know, it's all, it's it's a different nature of the project.
Okay, okay, so he doesn't have business and do we know he have a checking account for his business?
Oh, oh, I don't know.
Okay, so you don't know.
For his business?
Yeah.
I don't know that. All all we all we asked for was the insurance requirements and also a tax ID type of thing.
So Tyler, Tyler Dip was in violation of the city's municipal code. That he operate in the city, have a home-based business in the city without a license. I saw Alexa.
Yeah.
Um I did run a search on our system under um. His name and and TD Strategies and nothing is is showing up in our business license system.
Okay, so okay, so there are no business license uh. So, okay, well, thank you for that. Um and you know, why the um. Public speaker mentioned, run a check and she she mentioned it, Terry Rang, she mentioned that the uh TD Strategy. Uh doesn't have a uh FBN or something, just just. Physician name or something like this. And for the from the county? Because somebody did their homework and say that, is is any way we can confirm that? So he doesn't have a a doesn't file a business uh. Name as required by law with the county, so he doesn't have that. Um you know, I I wish to have Tyler here so I can answer, I ask him a a few questions directly. But you know, like I uh what I stated to you, you know, and and the email to you, Mark Wan. That he if he cannot be here, I have to question you, okay?
Sure.
Um. Are you familiar with the AB five, Assembly Bill five?
No.
City attorney?
I'm not sure which one you're referring to, cause they, they have different years to them and.
A, A, A five, uh, yeah, that time would be voted on, voted yes on that, AB five, no more independent contractor.
Yes.
Okay, what is that, sir?
That would be, in terms of getting into detail, that was the one that tried to codify the. The issue of independent contractors and how they're defined, and it made, uh. It easier to define something as, uh, as a person, independent contractor being an employee as opposed to an independent contractor.
Okay, so basically.
I think it was codified that.
Okay, so, uh, is Tyler Dip, uh, went here with this assembly man. Uh, member for the, um, State Assembly, he voted yes on AB five, and basically outlaw all of the independent contractor.
A lot more people had to be declared employees instead of.
There's, you know, there's the test that you do, there's a test, the free ABC tests that, that define whether a person is employee or independent contractor. So, so far. It's illegal to hire independent contractor in the state of California, except there's a, there's some exception. But I guarantee you that, uh, being a consultant and being a lobbyist is not one of them. Okay, everybody. Who want to work as an independent contractor cannot, can no longer work in, in the, in the state of California. They have to pay, spend about a thousand dollars to open an LLC. Okay, what do you know, LLC, limited liability or something, right, Christian?
It, yeah, limited liability company.
Right.
But that, but that wouldn't necessarily be required, if, if he did file a fictitious name, he can operate under his name, right, right?
Yeah, apparently, somebody checked and, and we can confirm that, so. You, and we wanna hire a, a, a former lawmaker. Who broke his, the, his own law that he built it for. To be a consultant. You know? Tyler is not my political ally, but I have nothing against him in term of. Working for the city. But when I look at. The way that he was hired. The way that he did not have a business license. The way he get paid, and the work that he had, he had done and submitted to the city. And Mark One, and what you told me, and you told the council, and you told everybody. The information we're given to me personally were less than truthful. And I have serious doubt about. This hiring. Okay, I, I, I rather, I rather have you. Let Tyler Dip go, cancel the contract, instead of let him terminate the contract. You know, I, it's, it's really disappointing to, you know, I was supporting you wholeheartedly, I want you to become successful. I want to take charge of the city and move it forward, I want you to staff your legacy. You know, to the city, to your family, to everybody. But I cannot help it, to, and, and to think that you make the deal with the devil. Because I heard that they, they, the rumor, way before you get hired, appointed to the, the, the city manager post. That you will be the city manager and Tyler Dip will be an assistant city manager. And when I hear that from, uh, the news from the, uh, Oinski County Register Reporter, and I was like. It took me a, a while to. To get to normalcy, because I, I was a shocker.
That, that never crossed my mind, sir, never crossed my mind. I don't know where that rumor coming from.
You know? We pay, so far, you, you know, when we were corresponding, and you told me that we have to pay Tyler Dip. Another check, was that? Six grand or something like that?
Sixty-four hundred.
Sixty-four hundred for the, uh. And you back pay him to, from March. Why, what, what, what do you do in March?
Uh, or not March, April. We did not pay for March, we paid for April, one month, and then we owe him a month of May.
Okay.
Because the first report we received was April fifth.
I want to, I want, I know my. What, what he have done in. The month of April, May, I want to know who we contact, who we talk to, and where.
Yeah, I.
It, 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 it contacted anyone via email, I want to see the, you know, the corresponding email between you and him. Text messages. You know, I wanted to have Tyler here, so I can ask him direct questions, for, for some reason. Refused to come here and explain to city council what he have done for the city.
Right, I, I, I.
I wanna know, I wanna know why he broke the law, Westminster law, for not having a home-based business license here. Not having a, a checking account, and. And what trouble me is that, 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 we, the city cut the checks for him personally. And, and now city is not on top of the AB five, no independent contractor law. That Tyler passed, both of them passed, that caused so many people so much problem. Because they cannot independently work as an independent contractor. That everyone have to pay a thousand dollars to establish an LLC. Or be hired at the city of, as employees. For any major, uh, you know, any employer. And then every year, you have to pay eight hundred dollar renewal fee for the LLC. You can imagine people have to do part-time work? And they have to pay that much money, and I'm sure he, I guarantee you, he doesn't wanna pay eight hundred dollars to get in the LLC. He's wanna get paid Tyler Dip as an independent contractor directly. This is a quality that we hire, Mark One. This is the quality, this is an issue that I have. With you hiring Tyler Dip. You know? I, I wholeheartedly supported you, uh, to be our city manager, but right now I have doubt. I have, have doubt about your judgment. I have doubt about your risk management. I have doubt about your, um, ability to make decision behind closed door. I have doubt about your, the, the, your, and the information I've received from you. I'll be happy to receive your resignation letter, sir, thank you.
Excuse me, um, Marwan, um, I thought I heard his number of nineteen thousand. I don't know, I, I just heard it, somebody say that that's what he. What we have paid him, is that, is that, is that number correct?
No, that, that, that number would have been correct if he, if he had worked for June also. If he had worked for April, May, June, that number would have been about nineteen thousand two hundred.
Can you ask? Okay, with that information that, uh, uh, Councilmember Doe requested, can you? Also just give us the information as far as, like, breakdown of the monies that he, uh, he's gonna receive.
It, it's in the staff report, I already put it in the staff report, so we just, we paid him seven thousand and sixty-four hundred.
Okay, and that's it, that's total?
That's it, that's it, I know, we haven't paid the sixty-four hundred yet, we just paid seven thousand.
All right.
And we still owe him sixty-four hundred.
Charles Manzo? I'm, I'm sorry to, uh, interrupt, but I, I would like to, um. Make a motion to have Tyler Dip return the money, because the, this contract, it fraudulent, is illegal. There is so many violations in this contract, and, uh, the money have, we have received to be returned to the city council, to, to the city.
So, yeah, that's, I mean, I didn't know, this is our, I didn't know this information, um. I mean, now that brings up questions as, as far as legality, I mean, uh, city attorney. Now, now that's a whole different issue. Um, for him not to legally be able to work in our city, I mean, what does that do? To, I mean, what's going on there that he wasn't even able to? To be able to illegally work in our city and to be able to receive those paychecks. Yeah, I think probably, I would say, yes, that this is something you wanna pursue by way of, um, challenging his right to payment that we. Whether we set an agenda for a closed session discussion under potential litigation. Because, uh, ultimately, that's what you'd be doing, saying, this contract's not valid, you wanna challenge it. So we should have that discussion in closed session, we could do that at the next meeting.
Can we agenda dive from this, uh, from this, uh, item?
Generally, you can, when you're discussing something and there's something relevant to that item, um. You know, I, I would get a vote for it, and.
Well, well, can, can, can we, can we walk on a, uh, emergency close session, session tonight and, um, discuss this?
But can we agenda this conversation? I, you, you could as part of this item, you could. Uh, I think to, uh, walk on something as an emergency item, there has to be an urgency, and, and what I understand is that. There's no payment right now going out the door, so that, we could hold payment, is that not true, Marwan, we could?
Yes, yeah, we can hold that last payment.
But we should, we already paid seven thousand dollars, cause I saw that check.
Right, that's it. That's the only payment made already, so far.
So my recommendation, then, just to hold that payment and then have a closed session at the next meeting?
Okay, closed session in the next meeting is, is good.
Can you get the motion to, to do that?
Yeah, I, I like to make that motion.
Okay, is there a sec? I'll second it.
So, uh, if I can go back for a second, so I actually had a motion originally to ask Tyler to return the funds, that motion's just not gonna. That's, that's a changed motion now, right, so now the motion is to, um, add an item to closed session for the next meeting.
To discuss the, uh, to discuss, um, about Tyler returning the seven thousand dollar check that he get from a, a legal contract. And in the meantime, we're gonna order the city not to, uh, mail out that. Um, payment for May.
Okay, ask for the funds, okay.
And are you, are you also asking as part of that motion that we ask Tyler not to, to return the money that was already paid?
That we're gonna ask, the, 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 the purpose for that closed session meeting is to, uh, to address that issue, asking Tyler to return that money. And, and that illegal contract.
Okay. Second agrees with that?
Yes.
Do we have the vote then?
Are we going to vote?
Repeat the motion again? You repeat a motion again?
As I understand the motion, um, it's to agendaize a, a closed session, uh, for the next meeting. For, uh, potential litigation to discuss this issue of, uh, the contract with, uh, Tyler Dip TD Strategies. Uh, it's to also, uh, well, to discuss the idea of whether or not to ask for the funds back. Um, and what else am I missing in there, there was. Legality, I mean, he doesn't have a.
And withhold the payment. And then.
Yeah, and we're gonna withhold the current payment. And, until after council provides further direction.
That's what?
Are we voting?
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for the mayor's cue, if we're voting.
All right, so we have the motion and the second and the floor, and then the council go to discuss in the closed door, right, for this.
Yes, at, at the next meeting.
Yeah, all right, so roll call vote, uh, Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
I swear to win?
Yes.
And Mayor Tom?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero.
All right, anything else, regarding this item? I understand, you know, I understand all the council member, I understand all the council member, you know, you all have concerns. Regarding, uh, our city, our city manager, however, I believe our city manager, he, he had reason. To hire Tyler, and he already explained that, so I don't want to repeat. Uh, I mean, in the past, a former city manager hired a consultant. And, you know, like, so we, we never asked about that. And, but however, I mean, I don't want to repeat, but our city manager, I really respect him, you know, because he had a reason. All right, so.
I, 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 I want to add to that too, I want to add to that too. One of the reasons that, uh, I, I still, I think that you guys still remember that one of the questions I asked, um. During the interview, is that. Can you get the, you know, uh, based on your experience as a public director, I know that you have been. You know, a lobby for a lot of funding for the city, and that's true, he mentioned it a lot of times during, uh, the, the meeting. And so that's the reason why I asked him, and he said, yes, he can do that. So, this is one of the thing that I confidently that he, he's trying to do. Well, the thing that, you know, I don't know, uh, if he knows it, the, you know, what are the question that you have, but. I can tell you that he have wholeheartedly, that trying to get the money for the city, so I respect you for that. Okay, and you actually did per your, uh, uh, you know, what you promised during your, your interview. And I, I commend you for that. So let's move on.
All right, you cannot disclose closed session, uh, information to, so you know.
Well, it's just an interview.
So, uh. Uh, next item, uh, six point one, city manager, but chasing a twenty.
Yes, uh, mayor members of the council, good evening again. This item, uh, is in response to, uh, Councilman, uh, Manzo, when he, uh, last meeting suggested that the. City manager expenditure, uh, limit be reduced. Uh, so, after that, we surveyed these surrounding cities around us. To see what, uh, level the city manager have authority to spend money before coming to council. And we found, uh, the following, Fontaine Valley, the city manager limit is fifty thousand dollars. Guardian Grove is fifty thousand, Huntington Beach is a hundred thousand, and then Seal Beach is thirty-four, and. What's not listed here, we got Stanton number after the report was done, was I believe twenty-six thousand. So, uh, based on those numbers, I, uh, I am recommending that, uh, the council limit. My authority to spend money, uh, to fifty thousand dollars to be consistent with surrounding cities and, um. I believe this is a workable number, however, uh, we would, if the council okay with the number, we would like to come back to you next meeting. To, uh, review the purchasing ordinance for the city, because I would like to exclude the public works projects out of this. Uh, currently, we have, um. We have, uh, certain limitations when we go out to bid, when we go formal bid, informal bid, and then council awards. So I would like to exclude that from the, that, and then the maintenance contracts, and then as well as. The, uh, the emergency contract, so we can explain all that next time, uh, by our, uh. Uh, by purchasing ordinance, and then, but the main thing is that. Any contracts that comes out of the city manager's office would be limited to fifty thousand dollars, otherwise. I would have to come to council with those, uh, with those, and then, uh, you know. Hearing what we heard, understanding what's going on, uh, you can be assured now, any contract I will sign. It will be sent to you, whether it's a one dollar or a, or a fifty thousand, or a fifty thousand. So, uh, that I can assure you, that's gonna happen. I'll just send it as an items of interest, and then, uh, you will have all the information.
I like to make a comment before we make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the uh, I look at the municipal code three point four four point zero eight zero. Did we have a two bits when we hired Tyler Dip? Uh, that's a four thousand dollar, right?
That's considered professional service. That's considered professional service, it's not, uh, it doesn't fall under that, I don't believe.
So professional service, what is professional service?
Professional service is when you hire engineers, architects. Uh, technical people, professional people versus uh like plumbing, electrician, uh, things like that. So that's how the state state.
That's a service, landscaping and not professional service?
I'm sorry?
Okay, so landscaping, paving, uh, are those professional service?
Yeah, that's not considered professional service, it's considered as.
That's not?
No. They're they're considered as, um, I I forgot the term, but they uh. Uh, they fall under different classification, but not not professional per se.
Where does it say professional service and not MC code? Uh, I I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure.
Three point four four point zero eight zero, Christian.
Eight zero, right, and then G. And then one.
Okay, those are subsections?
Yeah, one, it's one underneath G. Except as otherwise provided by law.
Um, can we modify the MC code to make sure that they cover everything?
We we, well, we can probably uh change our purchasing code, yeah, I'm not sure, Christian, that's a question to Christian, but uh. We're willing to do that.
Yes, I think what we're proposing is to get some direction and then come back at the next meeting with a modified code.
Yeah, I I think we should eliminate that professional services, anything that would would dollar amount greater. Uh, forty five thousand or less than whatever, um, fifty thousand.
Well, normally.
The number, the number much lower than right now, right before forty five thousand to one hundred seventy five thousand, two bits.
But that, that, there's two things, there's two things at issue. And that is the amount of authority that the city manager has to execute a contract without having to take it to the council for approval. He does that, does it on his own, that's the main, I would think the main issue here. The second issue is whether or not the contract is bid or, you know, competitively bid. Typically, in every city, you you have to bid public works contracts and other contracts, a lot of times. Um, professional services are not, because you don't always want, you don't want to have to go with. The lowest bidder on something where you're dealing with, you don't go with the cheapest accountant. You know, because you get what you pay for sometimes and those, so that, so they always have an exception for professional. That has to do with bidding. Um, but the issue of what's the city manager's authority to approve a contract? Versus having to take it to the city council is, I think, the primary issue here.
I I totally understand that, Christian, I totally understand, but my my concern right now is. Um, we have to have check and balances, so the um. The ability to, you know, who you know, to get in, do business with the city. Um, that's what I'm exploiting, exploiting the um check and balances issue here, so I totally understand that, yes. So how do we do that? How would you come up with a check and balances that uh? Taking all that expertise that we want to hire in without. Getting bids, but on the same time, we can put in a check and balances so that we will avoid somebody. Um, manipulation and and that's this kind of uh, um.
Authority, the key issue really is um. Having to put it on a council agenda and having staff spend the time to put together a staff report. Um, it's easier if 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 the city manager. To get something done, to be able to have authority up to a certain level, the question is, at what level are you comfortable? With the city manager having the ability to just get get something done? Um, the contract is gonna be a public record, so that's always available. But the question is, at what point do you want it to come to the city council? It's big enough that you're feeling that we need to put this on an agenda.
Can we bring it lower?
Yeah, you can take it as low as you like.
Forty five, forty five and fifty, right, is that what it is?
Right now, we have it up to one seventy five, really.
No, 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 the new, the new uh staff report.
Yeah, I think I'm fifty, fifty thousand, I think is is pretty reasonable. Um. Considering what's this around neighboring cities.
I think if you wanna bring it down to forty, that's okay too. I mean, uh, whatever the council liked is no problem.
Uh, fifty thousand is. Um, I mean, it's all about.
I don't know, I'm talking about the 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 two bit requirement.
Oh.
Yeah.
Right now, it's uh what we're just saying right now, fifty dollar, fifty thousand a contract.
Yeah, two two bits are required uh between fifteen thousand, actually, the seventy five is a typo, that should be forty five thousand, right, Aaron?
That's correct, so two bids are required between fifteen and forty five, and then between forty five and. One seventy five currently, two bids are also required, but the city manager has to sign, so up to forty five, the city manager doesn't have to sign. After forty five, the city manager does have to sign. As it currently stands, but um.
Oh, so that's a typo.
Yes. Yeah, the seventy five should be forty five.
Right, that that was my typo, um, but if you look at the attached um ordinance, um, on the, on page three. D or C and D, um. Say the fifteen to forty five and then the forty five to one seventy five.
Yeah, that's my opinion, I I like to hear the.
I'm good with that.
Other councilman.
All right, so Vice Mayor would like to make a motion as recommended for fifty thousand, right? I heard that before.
Yes.
True?
I just want to clarify.
All right.
So I'm sorry, the fifty thousand would be uh which, which number are we we setting that, that where it says one seventy five, it comes down to fifty?
Five.
The formal bidding requirement?
Item, I I wanted to make sure that that, that D, that one maximum is one seventy five. For D. And the minimum, more more than, it that it should say more than twenty five thousand. But not more than one seven, no more, no more than fifty.
Is that the only area that that uh city council want to fix?
And then, and then that one that Mr., that council member Doe was talking about for purchase, for bids.
What is that?
Which one was that, council member Doe?
Yeah.
Can you clarify again, you're saying, is this under paragraph D, you wanted to change? I just want to be sure I get this right.
Yeah, for, it should say.
I I perhaps C, I'd like to reduce that number down to um twenty five.
So from fifteen to twenty five?
Yeah. Fifteen to twenty five.
Okay, any change to D?
And then D twenty five to fifty.
To to, yeah, to to reflect that, um.
Okay. And then we'll change E to be fifty as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Vice Mayor, uh, would you like to revise your motion then?
Oh, I I revised my motion to incorporate the change that uh, the error, uh, the error that uh, you know, the typing error. But I I I do not revise my uh motion for the perhaps C that uh, you know, not more than. Whatever number that the that uh, uh, councilman Doe recommended. I think it's more than, not more than forty five thousand is 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 a good number already, I think is the right number. So yes, modifying to correct the error that the typing error. But not changing anything else.
Okay, under your motion then, under D, it would be forty five to fifty?
Yes, yes. But no more than uh. Not the hundred and seventy five, the the number, um, we mentioned, what number is that the?
The highest number, the highest.
What to fifty?
For the city manager, fifty?
Yeah.
Fifty, okay.
All right.
Um, let me just say one thing for clarification, because Marwan had mentioned. That he'd like to exclude public works contracts from this, and the reason for that, as I understand it, is. Public works contracts are their bid, and there's a process under state law that kind of governs that. It's a lot of work to have to put those on the council. Agenda, so the current authority goes up to two hundred for him to do those. They'd be their bid in accordance with the process, I I, as I understand it, they let. Uh, bidders know, uh, they have to, they have to post it on a internet, so a lot of people get notice of it. Um, and then you have to go with the lowest responsible bidder under state law. So he's saying it it would cost a lot of time and money to to lower that, so he'd recommend that, we can bring it lower if you want. And we can do it, but is, I just want to be clear on public works projects, that's working on the streets, working on buildings. Anything, anything like that.
And that's going to be formally bid anyway.
No, I'm I'm fine, we leave in that, leave in that as is.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear that, so that's part of the motion then.
Okay, I uh second a motion from uh Vice Mayor. All right, we have a motion and a second on a floor. Call for the vote.
And and to be clear, just I want to be clear, because we had two motions were previously. Under this motion, it goes from purchases made between fifteen and forty five, it stays at forty five. And then um, that would require an approved purchase order. Under D, the purchases made pursuant to this section valued at more than forty five. But not less than fifty thousand, not hundred and seventy five, would need at least two bids and approved purchase order. And could be signed by the city manager, anything over that is gonna go to the council.
Right. And we're still in, we're still excluding public works contracts.
Excluding public works contracts, leave them as they are.
Yes, yes. All right, let's vote.
Okay, council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Manzo.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and we'll return at the next meeting with a ordinance that that makes those changes.
Okay. So next we have. Comments and requests for agenda items from city council agency. Member in Lu A B one two three four report when required, so who who would like to go first? I let. Uh, member this. Member city council to volunteer. If you feel that you want to speak first, go ahead.
I guess I'll go, thank you, Mayor, um, I'd like to thank council for. All your, all your help today and participation, um, and staff, of course, for all your help and hard work. I want to say uh, thank you for um, for uh. For a community preservation unit, um, you know, we don't, I want to give a shout out to them. Alexa and uh George Perez and everybody others, uh, community preservation unit staff. And they started off with the task of, one task and their task grew. But they're out there every day, um. Going above and beyond and picking up items. You know, making a quick work of it, usually back in the day before their program came 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 about. Seems to take a lo- a long time to get things picked up and. And with them, it makes it, they get things done a lot quicker and. Just for quality of life issues, uh. When we, nobody wants wants to see, uh, you know, things out on our streets, on our sidewalks for days, so. It's a big job, you know, they do their best and it's a, seems like another never ending job, but. They're out there, so I wanna, I wanna thank them for that. Um. Next, uh, this is a, it's an an issue that. Um, it's a big issue. Um, what's what going on, um, kind of reminded me of something. That our city clerk slash. Uh, communications director Christine. Now, with all this Tyler Dip stuff that's going on, and she. She has a thing on her website that's a portal that. She started. That has a, an section where it has a. All the good things that, you know, she started, I think our mayor's on there. About good things in our city that's happening. So I I wanna, I wanna, I wanna start filling that up. Um, so what I'm proposing is. Is something that's. That we should have done, and I should have done this earlier, I know this is late in the game. We're right in the middle. Of uh, in middle of June and Pride Month. Um. You know, LGBT community. Is still to this day. A community that's one of the most discriminated groups in our country. Um, we're just, as our Asian community can attest to this. Um, it doesn't feel very good to be discriminated against. And there's a lot of things that we, I feel our city, and I want to start. I think this is a starting point, I want our city to start. To be unified, I think our city has gone through some stuff that I feel that. We can start being more, some more unity. And I think we can start, just start with this recognizing our LGBT community. Um, so, and in starting, uh. We can honor him by at least placing it in our agenda, hopefully, we can. Pass a resolution, I hope that we can get it in the next meetings. Our next meeting uh agenda. To pass a resolution to our city next year, to fly the inclusion flag. Enjoying many cities in Orange County who are doing it. Uh, just recently, Garden Grove passed unanimously, all all council members voted. To to pass this resolution, to fly the un- uh, inclusion flag in our city, in their city. And I want Westminster to. To start to feel that portal of of good things are happening in our city. Um. Our city, I think we, like I said, we need some some unity. And I think this is a good starting point. And I I. I I really don't like all this. This talk, all this thing that's been happening with all this bad press, I really don't like that, tired of seeing that. They start changing it, they start doing. They start uh doing good things in our city. So I hope the council can support this. And and they start by showing that we support our LGBT community. By by doing, by supporting them and flying our inclusion flag. Uh, like I said, I know this is a little, we're right in the middle of Pride Month. But let let's show that we're 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 inclusive to everybody. And this is the beginning, we will, we'll find other ways to show unity. Uh, with all different groups and. And and show that we here in Westminster, we are inclusive to everybody. Um. And this is just the beginning, so. My 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 uh item is to place on the agenda. To pass a resolution to fighting uh. The pride flag, inclusion flag in the month of June, every year. Uh, starting next year. I think it's maybe, I think it's a little late for this year, but. At least we can honor, honor the LGBT community by passing this ordinance. Uh, hopefully, we can make it an action item. Um, hopefully, our next meeting, so that's my item.
Second.
Okay, so that's a a request to place an item on the agenda. Okay, so that's a, a request to place an item on the agenda. Uh, for a resolution to fly the inclusion flag and that's, but that's to fly it for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. Um, that's it. Um, just want to thank everybody and thank you for all your hard work and. That's it. Thank you.
All right, I, I guess I'm going, going next.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the item that, uh, the topic that, uh, Councilman just talked about, you know, about the CPU. The group. Um, is there anybody still on, you know, i- i- in the meeting that can talk, uh, give us a little bit update on that? For what's going on, uh, related to Sang Nguyen, uh, mentioned about it today in his, um, comments.
In the letter we received?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll send someone out tomorrow morning to take a look. Um, I don't think there's anyone on the call. I mean Jake, um.
Yes. So absolutely. I, I spoke to, uh, Dr. Shane Nguyen and explained to him the different programs that we have in the cities. Like CPUs are one program. We have street sweeping. We have public works, uh, cleaning up the sidewalk. We have, um, you know, part-time staff picking up the bulky items. Um, I, I think that's he's, he keep, um, repeating that. There's a lot of thing that we need to do more and we understand that. And, and like I told him that we could continue focus on the area that. Very highly business district that generate a lot of trash and, 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 um, homeless as well. So, so, so we do have program in place.
The reason I, I, I brought it up is because the, uh, he also contacted the, um, MCSD and get the answer from the general manager that, uh, those items in a public right way. Which, uh, the city is responsible, not the, the MCSD. And so, you know, um, I, I believe the items he's talking about in public right away, right?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, so if, if those are the item that he's talking about, did we do anything about it? Or did we see anything, uh, that he mentioned?
Yes, so typically any arterial street that next to a business, um, business district. They always have trash, um, generated by, you know, the local business and wind blowing. And I explained to him that we do have a street program that we sweeping the, the busy street, uh, every week. But it doesn't mean that right after the sweep, the sweeper go through, you know, trash been generated by street or, or the businesses that will pick up immediately. You know, we do talking about plastic paper cup. So that will be picked up on the next round. Um, if, if we have a, a certain area that been generated by, like, you know, dropping by the tree or somebody have a big, uh, mess that put it on a sidewalk, we have city staff that come out and clean up those area immediately. And we also have a sweeper that can pick up those as well. But that's going to be a partnership. Between the city and the residents that working together. The resident just called the city, let us know. We're definitely going to pick up those right away.
So based on what I heard that, uh, he's very satisfied after your explanation to him.
His, his reason that we need to be more proactive, and I agree with him. But we also need to have the collaboration from the resident letting us know where. Sometimes, you know, we have illegal dumping that we don't know is sit in the back of the alley or in, in, in dead end street. And when the resident come calling in, we immediately go out and remove them. Both public work and CPUs are working on those very closely.
Okay, so how actively that we are, uh, doing our, uh, you know, pickups, uh, in the public right away, uh, during the last month or so?
Within the last, within the last month, any calls coming in for, to public works, we have a work order system is immediately picked up on the same day or the next day. Um, sometimes CPUs have been notified, they come out and do that as well. I mean, we, both team is doing. The same area as, as far as, um, public item and picking up items in public right away. Regarding to the trash on the street generated by street, uh, we do have street sweeping programs that taking care of those.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to talk about the public right away, uh, items, you know, bookie item to that. Uh, so with that, I, um, I'd like to, um, ask for the, uh, the CPU to report, uh, uh, next, uh, meeting. So, uh, I'd like to ask for the report, uh, next meeting, at the next meeting.
Just kind of a, a general update with statistics.
Yes, right.
Absolutely.
We need a motion on this or? I'm asking to put on the agenda, right?
Agenda, okay, so I, uh, second.
Yeah, I think if, if Marwan or, or Mayor, if, if you just agree that that can go on, we don't even need to vote on that. It's, it's just. Yeah, that's fine. We can do it.
I don't think we need any motion for an update.
We can do it, no problem.
Yeah.
So it, it will be on.
Okay, okay. So it will be on as an item or it will be on as the consent cal- calendar? We can do it either way, whichever way you like.
Yeah.
Usually, usually on a report like that, we've, um, we've, we've put it on the consent calendar as a report and you can pull it. But in this case, if it's going to be a presentation, we can just go ahead and stick it on the regular business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like the planning one. The planning one went as regular business item last time.
Okay. So would you like it to be a regular business or consent?
It's just regular.
So I guess that, uh, I make motion for that and, and second by the mayor, Ta, right? So we need to vote for that.
I, uh, second it anywhere. So we make it like, follow off, yes.
Here, go ahead. Take a vote on it and.
Are we voting?
Yes, we are now. Yeah.
It's okay.
Okay, we're voting on it. All right, so, um, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That's all for me tonight.
All right.
I'll be next.
Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Doe, Councilmember Ho, whoever.
So, um, I would like to agendize number one. The agenda would be relating to council interaction with city staff. Need to adopt, uh, you know, adoption of, uh, the proposed, um, policy of the city, city council and staff. So. That's the agenda I want to talk about.
All right.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Doe, and that's to place an item on the agenda. Regarding a policy for council interaction with city staff.
Okay.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Um, my second agenda would be, uh, I'd like to, I'd like staff to look into. How we can have a farmer's market in the Sunken Garden, maybe once a month. And that would be the agenda.
I second it.
Thank you.
So that's a request made from Councilmember Ho, seconded by Councilmember Manzo. To add an item to the agenda regarding a potentially a farmer's market in the Sunken Garden. Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, number three, um, I would like staff to look into a facility. Uh, that belongs to Illumination Foundation in Midway City that has twenty-five beds to see how we could make use of that. That they are, it's, I was told that it is inactive or, um, they are under utilizing right now. So I'd like to, uh, I'd like staff to look into that.
What is it?
The facility, twenty-five bed facility that belongs to, currently belongs to Illumination Foundation, Midway City.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
Currently underutilized. See if staff could look into that. See if there's any thing we could, uh, use in terms of beds. Is there anything that we could? Uh, just make the connection with Illum- Illumination Foundation.
For, for our homeless?
And regarding, regarding that facility to see what we can use it for, for the homeless, of course.
I'll second it. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And then, uh, I stated this one before, but I think I need to agendize, um, we, we talk about the city contract. That we'd like to have from city clerk. Um, every so often, so that needs to be agendized.
You, no, you, you don't. It's a, yeah, it's just a request. It's a, it's a matter of public record. So, um, you know, anyone who wants to take a look at what, uh, what agreements we have on file in the city clerk's office. Um, that's just to, so. Some contracts may not come to the city clerk's office for whatever reason. If we don't have it, it's not going to be on our log. So we don't know what we don't know in our office, unfortunately. So, um, there may be contracts that appear that we don't have.
Why would that be? Aren't you the official public, uh, I mean, record keeper?
Um, it's a matter, i- it's been a matter of, you know, practices over the years and staff changes, et cetera. There used to be a full-time records manager. Um, or records clerk per se, that would be in the city clerk's office. The, um, the goal is always to get all of the contracts, but sometimes they're very small, minimal. Uh, minimal, you know, minimal amount contracts that don't necessarily reach this office. Uh, whether it's, you know, it's a contract that doesn't, that, you know, doesn't have like, uh, doesn't require everyone's signature on it. So generally, like, the larger contracts would have a city manager signing it or, um, you know, myself to attest it, city, you know, city attorney review. Other ones are, um, they, they almost resemble like, like purchase orders in a way. Um, so unfortunately, some of those slip through the cracks.
But if, if I may, we can definitely change that to make sure all contracts are signed by city clerk.
Yeah, we're, well.
We can do that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be signed by me. It's just a matter of making sure that I have a copy of it. So, you know, it's something we've, we've worked on for the, you know, we've worked on for the last few years trying to get those in.
But if, if it's not signed by you, that it might be missed. That's why I think we should put your name on.
And, and, yeah.
We, we will work on that, no problem.
Yeah, but we do have, you know, major contracts that are approved at city council or contracts that the city manager does sign. We do have those on our list. So we can provide those as part of, you know, weekly, monthly, whatever reports, whatever.
If we could have those monthly without us asking, that would be.
Abs- absolutely. That is not a problem at all.
I would still, I would still, if I may, uh, like the city clerk to sign all contracts. If, if that's okay with the council.
May I make a suggestion? Marwan, can you set a policy? Can you set a policy? Have somebody a policy on that?
Yes.
And so that we, we have in a book and everybody just follow it?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so lastly, I would like to acknowledge, uh, um, Juneteenth Day. Thank you so much, uh, for the person who spoke earlier. Happy Juneteenth Day, everybody. Uh, it is also called Emancipation Day. These are just statements I'm making. Um, and, um, I just would, I just want to acknowledge, um, Juneteenth, uh, just so in case you don't know, it is a combination of the two words, uh, June and nineteenth. And this is the, the day we celebrate, uh, the emancipation of the last remaining enslaved. African-American into US. Um, that was June nineteenth of eighteen sixty-five. Um, and usually to celebrate, we drink, um, something red. Uh, anything red, red color, red drinks are popular to celebrate, like strawberry soda or anything. Any red soda, watermelon or any red pews. So, um, happy Juneteenth Day. Um, and then because we're, our next meeting is going to be, will be. The last week of the month, so we, we won't have the time, uh, we won't be acknowledging this day. Juneteenth Day right on the nineteenth. And the other thing that's happening on June nineteenth is also Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. That marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of this annual commemoration. This army, the Army of the Republic of Vietnam, that's also short, uh, the acronym ARVIN. Was the main fighting force of the Republic, uh, Republic of Vietnam or South Vietnam during the war. Established on the Republic's founding in, um, nineteen fifty-five. ARVIN began with a hundred and fifty thousand troops. And by nineteen seventy-five, included over one million men on. During the war, ARVIN troops were advised by American soldiers. So I'd like to acknowledge June nineteenth also is Republic, Republic of Vietnam Armed Forces Day. Thank you. That's all I have.
Right, Councilmember Doe.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, you know, I just want to, to acknowledge the six-years-old boy who gets, uh, tragically. Was killed on the freeway a couple of weeks ago and, uh, finally, um, we have, uh, uh, two arrests was made and I, uh, I, my heart and I pray to go out to the, uh, the parents of the child. You know, no parents have to bury the child. So I hope this will bring justice and closure to the family. You know, it's been, it's a, it's a little more than, uh, two years since I, uh, make it to the city council. And there's a lot of thing that happening, uh, in the county council since, uh, you know, I was, I was city council probably have been the most watched, uh, of city council meeting across the nation, if not, uh, international. Are you tired? You know, I, I, I can go all day long. I mean, I've been doing that for over two decades, so, you know. But it's time to move forward. Are you second time asked begging? Your colleagues to put an i- an item on the agenda? And being bushed around behind the scenes? I don't know. It's time for us to change. I think it's time for us to get rid of that majority rule in order to place an agenda item on the agenda. We are adults here. We've been through enough. So I'd like to make a motion to bring an action item. About getting to discuss the issue of, of the majority rules. Is that any item on the agenda? It's fun again when you have the majority supporting you. But it's not fun when you're only receiving an event.
Um, I'll second it because I spoke about this last time about how long it takes us to get things done and, uh, as we had an issue in the past with the council member. Uh, one of council member Ho's items, how it just, things just take a long time to get things done around here. And I think we need to revisit this, so, yeah, I'll second it.
And that's.
The motion and second.
That's to discuss essentially the agenda placement process?
Right.
Okay. All right, so motion made by Councilmember Doe, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Manzo to add that to the agenda. Uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Upstate.
Okay, and Mayor Ta.
Upstate.
Okay, that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, may I mention something, Mayor, uh, before you? We had an issue, um, I don't know, a few meetings back about, uh, our consent calendar.
I don't know, a few meetings back about uh our consent calendar. And um I think we had a discussion that we were gonna place it on the, on a future agenda item as far as um we had a a member, we're, we're gonna, we were going to, or we did allow. Um and I think it's a good idea to allow member of the, members of the public to pull an a consent calendar item.
I believe, I believe that member of the public allowed to pull item from the consent calendar, am I right? City attorney?
That's already allowed, I think.
Yes, but the public allowed to pull item from the consent, yes.
Yes, I defer to.
Public comment, right? Doing public comment?
So this is where, this is, so this is where it became a little bit tricky. So the agenda as it's written says that it's um, you know, a member of the council that that pulls it and it it doesn't address a member of the public. However, um for as far as I remember, you know, being here the last five years, we've allowed and previous city attorney has allowed, um you know, and of course, at the, at the discretion of the mayor, we've allowed members of the public to pull consent calendar item.
Okay, I have question, what is a state law? Because you know, we are general law city, so we have to follow the state law. But it is.
There's no law on this, so you don't have to, you don't have to allow it. The difficulty of allowing that is that arguably, they could pull every item. The purpose of a consent calendar is to try to put more routine matters and get them done in one vote.
Yeah, it's up to the council, I mean, like, you know, I want to have the really efficient meeting, but if the council really wanna public to pull any item on a consent, it's up to the council, it's not me.
Did we have, did we agenda that?
Why I wanna, I think we should put it up, can we agenda, can I add that as an agenda item?
Yeah, this.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this.
You, you wanna put on a, a agenda? Okay, I'll second it.
Agenda for discussion item, we wanna put that on there.
We can, yeah.
A second.
We can certainly do that. Okay, so yeah, so we will bring back an item regarding uh allowing members of the public to pull consent calendar items. Uh so roll call vote, council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Councilor Manzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, mayor. All right, all the city council, anything else?
Uh, let, let me finish, I'm sorry, I'm just halfway done, okay. You know, I um, you know, I hope that we can have an opportunity to move the city forward, really move the city forward. I don't care who is my political ally, if you have the the right agenda that co- that, that, that I agree with and I will support you. I don't care who's, okay? I don't need to, I don't need to gang up with anybody, I'm, I'm, I'm standing on my own feet, make my own judgment. You can convince me that you, your ideas, good idea for the city, I'll support you, so I hope from, from, from now on we can move forward. Uh one more thing I'd like to uh to talk about real quick. The, you know, a lot of people were, talked to me, uh talked to me about the um there was a, a meeting at the um at the park, uh on, I think it's Sunday, like, over the weekend, regarding Quantry War Monument. I think where we, uh the council voted uh sometime last year, I think. Because we believe that the uh the Vietnamese and other veteran group uh asking for that, so, but um that was a, that was something that the council voted. Um however, I heard that uh people sent me a photo, told, told me that one of the photographer posting photo on, on Facebook for some reason I couldn't see its photo. So, you know, people sent me photos and, you know, I mean, Tita and Charlie Nguyen was, was there. But apparently, the event was not permitted. I mean, we, we turned down a lot of permitted, uh the permit required event during the pandemic with some reason that uh our elected official in the city do a groundbreaking uh event without permit and I don't know about Councilman Manzo and Councilwoman Kim Lee Ho, if you got invited, but I, I would not, I didn't get a invitation. Uh so um I would like to agenda, I agenda and I asked an item to talk about um this issue, elected official who do not follow uh the, the, the protocol that required by the city to conduct, uh you know not for an improvement and, and talk about it on the next, next meeting.
Could I ask you to repeat? You, you just mentioned my name, what did you say? I'm sorry, repeat that.
Oh, I um, I was asking if, I didn't get an invitation to be at that event, usually, uh because that, that was a, a um the city, city council approved that um war mon- monument, the Quantry War Monument, I'm not sure when. I did not get an invitation, but I uh, I, I see, saw photograph. Uh, do we have photograph of that, uh Madam City Clerk, for you? Pop a couple of those on, I'd say.
Yeah, the ones, yeah, let me, give me a second. My staff's gonna have to show them.
But you didn't see me in the photograph, right?
No, I was just wondering if you get an invitation, I'm not sure, uh uh Councilman Manzo, did you get a invitation? I didn't get an invitation.
No, I didn't get.
Yeah, I'd like to explain about that. There was a, a small gathering on Sunday. And, you know, uh because we, you know, based on our city ordinance, if, you know, uh at a gathering, no more than a hundred, there is no permit needed at our city ordinance, unless you want to uh revise ordinance. Yes. And, you know, before that meeting, there was another gathering from the other group. And that group did not need any permit. Yes, and and the vice man, myself, we are the part of the foundation, so at a, on that event, we did not invite any elected official. Yes.
So you were there, okay, you know, we, we, we can talk about when we agenda the item, well, you know, it's midnight right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have this agenda, we don't have this agenda, so it might be better discussed at the next meeting.
Okay, but I, I want to, before we vote, I want to mention that he said that this is violation. It's not an violation of the.
You, you can explain that.
Okay, so I want to mention that before we vote, that's it. You, because you can't, you can accuse, so that you can, you can, uh, you know, so, so people can support, vote it for, for the item.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody, I would wanna have an opportunity to talk about it, so you can.
Yeah, but tell, tell the people, tell the right thing, don't accuse don't accuse the, the matter before you, you, you vote.
You need to take a deep breath.
You can ask, you can ask, you relax, all right?
Council member Doe, let me speak, I mean, like, you uh mentioned earlier, you want to move the city forward and you want, you know, all the council work together, but the way you talk you have to look at yourself, the way you talk. You come up with something that, you know, violation, like terminology violation. What did they do? What did the vice mayor? Uh, do? I mean, like, you mentioned earlier, you want us to come up, you know, to work together. You know, but the way you talk. You really.
And look at you, you Scott, you, you said, oh, uh, the, the last weekend, I saw the mayor and Charlie Nguyen, who is that Charlie Nguyen? Well, I respect you, I call you as a council member. Please, call me as a council member, I don't mind.
Hey, listen, Charlie, let's talk about, let's talk about that next week.
You want to work with.
About the next meeting.
Okay, then you have to respect people, okay?
Let's talk about this ma- next meeting, so that we can, you can present your mitigating circumstances, so yeah, I'm sure you have a good reason. I'm not accusing anybody. I'm just saying, hey, there was an allegation that. It just be quite a second.
What's the motion? What's the motion? To add an item?
An action item to talk about the Quantry War Monument groundbreaking at the um at the park. I think that's the, the, the city council sanctioned um event, but uh, so we talk about that.
Third second.
Seconding.
Okay, so motion second, and that's to place item in the agenda to talk about the groundbreaking event. Council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Councilor Manzo.
Yeah, yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
No.
And Mayor Ta.
No.
Okay, motion carries three to two with council, or I'm sorry, with the Vice Mayor Nguyen and Mayor Ta voting no.
Well, with, uh, thank you very much, uh with no exception, I just wanna um show my gratitude to the CD employees, staff, you know, working hard during the pandemic, I'm excited. Looking forward to the reopening of California in, in a couple of weeks, so hopefully that we, we back to normal. And I, we like to ask CD to continue to support uh outdoor dining and, and then businesses, uh and then support them and relax the, the um licensing of permit until we completely get out of this pandemic. Thank you very much.
All right, it's already late, it's the uh so uh next meeting will be on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one at seven PM.
Mayor Ta, I can, if I can just add real quick, just, there was a, there was a comment and um regarding Juneteenth proclamation, I just wanted to clarify, last year uh for members of the public, the mayor and city council did issue a Juneteenth proclamation um that was signed on uh June eighteenth, so it was, it was done after it was brought up at the last meeting, so it was posted on the website. Um and uh so this year, um you know, there, there are plans to put out another Juneteenth proclamation in line with what, with which what was, you know, with in, I'm sorry, it's late, in line with what was done last year, so that will be out, so just to clarify that. Um, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Very good job.